Okay, we got Lee on the line too, so.
Can you hear us, Lee?
I can hear someone in the background.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
There's a second?
I'll make the second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, minutes?
There's a lot of them.
We've got several meetings to deal with. Um, are there any questions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meetings?
No, Rob, I read through all of them and I didn't find any, anything that needs to be changed or corrected.
Okay.
I have no problem with the minutes.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll sort of.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Bills?
Okay, most, most of their rest here, I'm, I'm going to be listening more than communicating.
Sure, that's fine.
If there's a, a problem with the tie vote, I will be here to break the tie. And, uh, uh, as you know, I'm not a high-tech whiz or genius. So I couldn't blame everything on to an unstable computer.
Uh-oh, you're telling me excuses.
I'll be here, hopefully.
Patrick, did you want to touch on this one?
Yeah, sure.
You want me to?
Sure.
Okay, um, Rob asked me to touch on the bills for, um, state's attorney, uh, for, with Mercer County, we, we contract with them to do incarceration of defendants, so we had, right here, so we had three defendants this last month, uh, Danielle Butler served a day, uh, Varian Hettle served three days, and Cody Rhodes served thirteen days. All of them are now out of custody. Um, last month, we had had, um, a bill from Mercer County requesting that we pay for Cody Rhodes dental work. Um, I looked into it, we're not responsible for that bill, we're not paying it.
We already did pay it because they have sent it up to pay and I paid it.
Okay, I will deal with it with Todd. I'll get that money back.
Just grab a couple more.
Okay. Um, are there any questions on the rest of the bills?
Nope.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Lee?
I haven't seen him, but I was talking to him, no objection.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Well, if you want to have discussion first, Rob, um, I did talk to Jay, uh, Jayden and Linda. Linda pretty well explained most of them, and, uh, one of the big question I had was, uh, for a tire, and we figured that out because they blew a tire on one of the trucks, all on scrap iron down, so all, they're all pretty well justified.
Okay. All in favor of approving the bill, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried?
We'll get a recall.
A roll call.
Oh, okay. Lee?
Yes.
Dave, aye. Rod is aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Abatements, that is.
All of these? You don't want to stay in front? That's all these in here?
Yeah.
Just Rob's side of all of us.
This one?
The one that, yeah. Well, not, not this one, there was one that said, uh, for the, yeah.
Patty here for abatements?
No, I will.
Okay, you're gonna take care of it?
Yep, I'm take, going to take care of it, there's only one, um, and it is for total of three hundred and seventy dollars and six cents. So, if you're good with it, I just need some, a signature where it says chairperson, not county auditor. We just need the approval to do that abatement.
Uh, is there a motion to approve the abatements? Uh, three?
Three hundred and seventy dollars and six cents.
Three seventy oh six?
That's for?
Um, John Myhoff. It's on the next page.
On the next page.
It's Myhoff.
Jeff Myhoff? From New Salem?
Okay, that's all approved, everything is?
Everything checked out, she won't give me anything unless it's good, so.
I'll make a motion to approve that abatement.
Motion's been made by Dave. Lee, are you okay with that?
Uh, yes, I am, the, the one for Jeff.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Okay. Second by Lee, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Planning and zoning updates, um?
Um, so the only update that I currently have right now is we had a meeting last Thursday to discuss which board members, um, were interested in serving on the two ordinance committees for solar and data centers. Um, Bill Brylmeyer would like to be on the solar committee, and then Cassie Smith and Matt Wilkins both said they would be willing to serve on either one. Um, so then the question becomes, um, how would you like me to proceed getting interest from the general public? Do you want me to advertise that we have a spot available for a person from the general public for each of these committees? And then from industry as well, if there's somebody from each of those industries that wants to be involved, or? How would you like to do that? Because you guys as the commissioners will be the ones appointing these people to the committees for these ordinances. Um, I just need some guidance as to how you would like me to proceed further.
I have, I have a question now. Are you, are you saying you're gonna have a, another special committee for, for solar and also one for the data center?
That is the intention, unless you as the commissioners would like to do one committee to work on both at the same, I mean, we can do one committee that's working on both sets of ordinances, that's fine too.
Now, is it, is this what the planning and zoning was? Is this additional people to, to study this? That's, that's the question.
Well, it was, I had talked to Natalie in Morton County, and I also spoke to Patrick a little bit about this. This has probably been a month or so ago since we talked about it, but it was recommended that we have a committee put together, not just of the planning and zoning board, but somebody from that industry and somebody from the general public in the county that has an interest in this or would like to have somewhat of a, a say, and then as well as one of the commissioners on that committee as well. So we get a few more voices on these ordinances versus just the planning and zoning board.
I, I guess, my feeling just hearing this for the first time, uh, I, I think the planning and zoning board should be able to, to, uh, do the study and come up with a recommendation. But like I said, this is the first time I've heard this, so. So, that's my thoughts right now, I, uh, so if I would, right now, I would say no on that.
Well, we could, we could add, like she said, if we would need somebody outside, then outside.
I think that's, that's just the general idea, because putting it all just on three planning and zoning board members, because there were some that were not interested in serving on this specific committee for these ordinances. That's why, after discussing it with other counties that do this for re, drafting ordinances, it was recommended to do it this way, more, other counties do it this way also, because you're getting more than just your planning and zoning board giving ideas, they are also involving the industry that's impacted by these ordinances, as well as a citizen that lives in the county that will be impacted by these types of things as well. So, we have time to think about it, I mean, if you just want to think about it for this month, and come back to the next meeting. Yep, we can absolutely do that.
Okay. Uh, so conservation dis, discussion?
All right. I'm just gonna pass these up so you can see my wordage, like you need more papers. So at our March fourth board meeting, my supervisors made a motion for me to come and visit with you guys, and I can read the motion, but basically it's asking that you require Nextera and all their affiliated contractors that are doing tree plans and/or grass seedings, run them through NRCS STD to make sure they're reading the specs. So that's, that's the motion that was put on, that's the top, or I guess the second paragraph, so you can read the motion that they did. And from what we can tell, in century, the century code number below gives us the authority to request that, so, so we're just asking for you guys to do that.
Okay, so, I met with, uh, Sky Keller and Mark, Sky is with ECT, and Mark is with the, um,
Nextera.
Nextera, and, um, I guess they're here to address that part two with GD. Had GD not been in the office, uh, yesterday, uh, Sky was a talk to, so I guess, do you want to share what we talked about the other day, about how you're gonna handle going through the NRCS?
Yeah, so, we will be coordinating with all of our landowners and then coordinating planting plans. All of those planting plans do go through the PSC, and are in accordance with their guidelines, and are also in accordance with the NRCS, um, photonic guidelines as well, so all of those will be met, and we'll just do all the coordination. Um, we are partnering with another local contractor, they're procuring all the trees locally as well. And then, so we'll be doing it all within the community, and then just all together. We'll then go on to continue to monitor the survivability of trees, so that way all the NRCS and PSC guidelines are met successfully.
We would, our, my board would like to see the plans, I mean, we're, we just want to be part of working with the solution, because in five years or whenever, you guys are gone, and it's gonna all come to me. Like, if, if they, I mean, I know you have to meet the PSC requirements of survival and for two years or whatever, but when your guys are gone, they're, they're gonna come to me with their questions and concerns. And I've seen the tree list, that I don't know if that's truly what you guys are recommending, but American Elm should not be planted in shelter belt conservation situations. Green ash, we should not be replanting thousands of green ash, Dutch elm is, or Emerald Ashwood is now in our state, it's like, so your list is, to me, is very concerning, and that's where this conversation's coming, and the producers are coming in to me and asking me these questions, you know, that's why we want to be a part of it, because they're coming in and having me build them tree plants to give to you guys, to show you for ideas. And I have no problem doing that, but if, like, I'm just totally wasting my time, because you're gonna tell me, no, you're gonna do this, that's where we want to fix the communication.
And this tree list that was given to you, is that given to you by Von Weaver by chance?
No, it was given to me by a producer, I don't, they didn't tell me where it came from.
Oh, okay.
And I, I mean, I could give it to you, I have a copy.
Yeah, sure, that would be wonderful, um, I'll have to check.
GD does have Von Weaver down that who he was in contact, but I didn't have that ring.
So when, when he, when he contacted me to bid this, just for your guys' information, he called me on a three thirty on Wednesday, told me I had to have a bid at noon on Thursday.
Okay.
But wouldn't tell me where, all he told me is fourteen thousand trees, and that you guys would provide me the trees. And from past experiences, one of your guys' projects in Burke County, you guys bought trees for me, they got loaded onto a truck unprotected and driven away, so I wouldn't bid that where you guys were providing the trees, because those trees were dead before you got to their company. So like, I couldn't bid that for my producers, so.
Yeah, I will have to look at our tree list, it is not my understanding that those are on our current list, so I'll have to look at that.
That I was handed to from a producer that was told, this is your trees you can pick from, it's really sad.
Okay.
Yeah, the only requirement we're gonna, we have to follow is, is the term native species. That's the requirement of the PSC, so, yeah, we, we have no problem following recommendations.
And, and, I mean, I just, these guys are, producers are coming to me, so I just, if possible, we'd like to be a part of it, whether, I mean, it's free technical, like, I'm not, we don't bill for these guys to come in and visit with me, they just come in.
Right.
I have a very good working relationship with ninety-five percent of the county. And they're, they're coming to me, checking what you guys are telling them. And I'd really like to be on the same page.
Well, my conversation the other day with Mark and Sky was, uh, they said exactly in pickup, what you're asking, how they were gonna work with you, so I think the best way to go forward would be you guys meet now on, and then if there is a problem, then we'll definitely address it. Is that good enough, or do you want more, or? I think if they're willing to work, and Sky is.
I'll make that commitment, and we'll work with you on the front end of it, so.
And Sky has committed that they're gonna take care of all the weed control and everything for a long time.
The other, I sit on the SCD board also, um, the only other concern was, uh, the erosion that's occurring out there um, with some of the poorer soil, soils, and, uh, the remediation to that, as well as approved grass plantings that are gonna work in some of those places, because I, one grass planting that was put together is not gonna be suitable for some of them, them areas or soil types. Um, was, was the other, the other concern that was brought up at the meeting.
One of, I think it was a Nextera individual, Matt, with one of our NRCS guys, and he built a very generic loamy soil tree, or grass planting. And when you go out there, I mean, the majority of the soils aren't loamy soils, so that was another concern of getting you, you know, like, can you, I mean, we're here, that's what we're, at offices, therefore work with us to.
Well, I know we've been in your office, and I know our contractor's been in discussion on the, on the grass stuff.
Just, just the one time he put that mix together.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have that email too, that says, this is a, for loamy, you know, don't use it as a generic blanket, it's grass seeding, because it's.
And we were getting some feedback too from, uh, the county.
My, my concern with the grass seedings is we end up with another waterline issue where you can follow the waterline from Dickinson to Rob's house or wherever, part or else, because it was just not done right, so. We just want to be part of the conversation and not forgotten we're here, so. As I said, I'm just presenting the motion put by my board to you guys, so.
Well, I think if you're fine with it, like I say, um, they committed the other day, they were willing to sit down with you guys, get it all squared away, and, um, Kirk Ruther got back to me this morning, he's worked with landowners also, and so, uh, I think between them, I'll stay in touch with them, and they work with you, I think, is that, if that's fine with the board.
Does a landowner have a say in what gets planted?
Yep. I, that's what they told me the other day too, that they would work with the landlord.
Yeah. We'll get locations and, and species preference and those types of things.
Were you the one that texted, you want a leafy spurge planted?
I just want to communicate, we haven't had that through this whole project.
Okay. David, Bill? I'm sure you've got all their names, right, Mark?
Yep, it's, and we have a lab team of, uh, probably three people now, that are still working on this project, so.
They're good with you, Dave, as long as they contact you?
Well, we're gonna have to fix some major erosion problems first.
And Mark, we've talked about that that day too, we were in the pickup for quite a while, talking about probably about thirteen issues, I believe, that they're gonna address, and Mark committed he'd take care of it, and he's kind of saying right now that full commitment.
Yep, I've already, since I was out here on Monday, I've already talked to our environmental compliance officer about that, given a bunch of pictures of what I discovered. That's why I was out here Monday, to see how things had survived the melt and things like that, so.
So we did talk about, uh, section lines that were, you know, ruts in the section lines. We talked about fences, I had a call this morning about another landlord with fence, and they said they were gonna take care of all of them. And I guess I'm gonna trust that they're gonna do what they said, I hope, and like their babe, if they don't, you know my phone number?
Mine's in the phone book.
Well, that's the major issues on my cover.
Okay, and if you don't, Dave, this is right, okay? Appreciate that. And Chris is here for the same reason, I'm with Sylvan. Anything else? No, I'll, I'm definitely gonna stay in touch with them, I have both their numbers and, uh, like I say, Kurt's and, uh, I'll be on it, I'll be over here, rolling, off and on the way it looks.
Anytime, I'll take you.
Because we did talk about the laydown areas, how they're gonna redo them here come the spring. And, uh, yeah, there was a lot of issues, we spoke about that. They answered all my questions, so have, hopefully they take care of you guys.
And Dave, to bring it to the SCD board, that, that's what we're elected to do, is kind of conserve everything and keep an eye on that kind of stuff, so I mean, we can, we'll just, we can assist with that too. Right? Okay.
Thank you.
So, answered all your questions, is there anything we can do for you, for now?
For now. Okay, do we need to deal, do anything with the proposed legislative basis? Just use that as a guideline?
I, I would say that what we were looking for is, um, it was brought to our attention, we wanted to relay it to you, we're just kind of the advisory overseer type of, we can't have any teeth in the matter, so I mean, if, if it doesn't get addressed, uh, correctly, that's where you guys as county commissioners.
These are your recommendations?
Yes, yes. So to make sure it gets done correctly for the state, like, the Dave, the world, or, or everybody else, so.
Okay.
Um, I did get a text from Kirk Ruther, if anybody wants his number, he, he's glad to share it, and I don't know if you want, you guys care if I share yours?
That's fine.
If somebody's.
Give her away.
Yeah.
So if anybody needs it, I've got all their numbers.
Okay. Um, we're slightly off schedule.
If we take off or?
I think, thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
And then if it works, Sky, if you want to sit down with them someday or call them?
Absolutely, we will.
I'd appreciate it, thank you for showing up.
Kenny?
Thank you.
All your, your, your people here?
Yep.
And Daryl are here?
Casey and Jim are not here yet, I don't think, I don't think Casey is here, right, from Butler?
I guess, yeah.
No, Casey and Jim aren't here yet, so we could do a few other business items that are.
You want to open some deals?
We have to stay at the time that they were advertised for, but we can, there's some other business stuff we can discuss, that's perfectly fine. Um, so the courthouse weather closures, when we had that cold snap last month, um, the policy that was put in place probably a couple of years ago was that the county courthouse follows what the school does as far as closures go, um, or delayed openings or something like that. Now, I called, um, asking what do we do with this extreme cold? The roads are perfectly fine, but the school was opening a couple hours late. Our policy had been, we follow what the school does, however, it's not like we couldn't get to work and we couldn't do our job. So we did open at a normal time. My question to you is, um, can we revise our policy? Um, rather than following exactly what the school does, because there have been times where we were closed when there were snow events, but the day was actually decent, we could have made it into work, but the school had closed because we weren't sure. And so we just followed what the school does, because that was the policy that was in place. Now, for people with kids in school, it worked really well for them. However, there's a lot of people that work here that don't have kids in school, and if it was perfectly fine to get to work, we've been asked a few times, well, the bank is open, how come you're not open? So, I guess my question to you is, as our decision makers for the courthouse, please tell me how you would like to?
Well, I think like you did the day when you called, when it was, uh, twenty below, yeah, some cars or vehicles aren't gonna start.
Right.
But my view is, if you can make it to work, we should.
We should be open.
And if the school, Lee, correctly, because you and Daryl have been on this forever, but I think if it's, the roads are passable, even though the school doesn't go because of school buses, we should probably, if you can make it to work.
It should be open.
We should still be open. Do you agree, Daryl?
Yep.
I would just suggest taking out the, the part of following the school.
Okay.
Because, you know, it's, the school's a little bit different with children on school buses and stuff, so.
And that, that's, I mean, that's perfectly acceptable, I think it just, at this point now, it comes down to whose, whose decision is it for us to close? If it's no travel advised, I'm assuming the sheriff's department doesn't really want us driving out on the roads in case we go in the ditch or whatever, so if we're for sure no travel advised, even though there's been no announcement that we're closed, I'm going to assume that we should just close, or delay opening until the weather possibly gets better, or something like that. I want to know whose decision that is.
I'm wondering, should we go off the sheriff's?
I would like to ask the sheriff's department for that.
Early in the morning anyway, so we're checking roads all night.
You have it on Facebook and stuff, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I would like to give them the ability to say, hey, the roads are not good, let's keep the courthouse closed at, for the day, or if it gets better, let's open at ten o'clock, or something like that, I mean.
Lee, what is your thought about the courthouse closures?
Okay, this, this is, uh, no matter how it's done, it's, uh, okay, in the, in the past, uh, probably every other time that we've closed or didn't close, we've had controversy. So when it came up with that, the decision to do as the school does, which was probably, I don't know, three or four years ago, we haven't, haven't had the issue, I tell, the cold snap, but last week or the week before. And, uh, uh, whose choice it is, it's always been the auditor forever, who's made the decision to, to open it closed.
Give it to me.
So, uh, the commissioners, if they are called, uh, well, you'll probably get three different answers. And, uh, it's worth best to do as the school does, is what we found.
Or the sheriff's recommendation? Lee, or the sheriff's recommendation?
Uh, we've had that, which disagreed with some commissioners before, so what, what does the sheriff recommend?
Well, our recommendation, we usually go, we tell the school, usually if they should be, you know, having school early or not, and, you know, the superintendent makes the decision on it, so we tell them the conditions of the road or the weather or whatever.
So it's probably not gonna change much, and if you're already involved with that.
Yeah, I've been heard.
Did we hear his comment?
Lee, uh, Dave said that they're usually in communication with the school anyway, so they're usually on the same page.
Oh, okay, okay, I wasn't aware of that part, okay.
I mean, I, this, this question is being asked simply because of the cold snap that we had. The school did open late, or they were closed because of the cold weather. When you have kids involved, I totally understand that, if a bus breaks down and you've got kids in it, that's not great. But the roads were fine, and we could make it into work, and so I called and asked, what do we do? You recommended we just open as normal, which was perfectly fine with, I think, everybody that was here, except for a couple that had kids in school that had to wait, but that's why I'm asking. That's why I'm asking the question, because I. Don't really like calling you guys at eight o'clock the night before saying, well, I don't know if the weather's gonna be bad tomorrow morning, but the school is already closed for tomorrow. Uh, you know.
I think my view would be, and I don't know if we need a motion on this, but I think if uh. If Dave's, Dave's advising the school, then we should probably listen to his recommendation, and as far as cold weather, I can see the buses not going when it's twenty below. And we shouldn't be closing then, probably. If you can make it, we should have it.
Okay, I'm fine with that, I mean, like, I, we, I can communicate with the sheriff's department and we can determine whether or not we should open.
That's fine.
I'm good with that.
Sure.
Just feel like sometimes. There's been days where we did close and we probably could have been open, cause it really wasn't that bad, so. Okay.
Courthouse updates?
Um.
Can you send me out the doors?
Yeah, so the doors are done, um, the outside doors, the back doors, the front doors, Warren's locks and keys is coming to just switch out the um. The actual lock on the front, and then they're gonna look at putting a different handle on the back doors. Instead of what's on there, cause it's the keypad is attached to the handle. The fobs work really good, they automatically lock the front doors and unlock the front doors on the schedule. So, so far, I think they're working out pretty well.
Is the west door been dealt with yet?
Not yet, I think they were waiting for better weather to come and actually do it, so um. But that will be worked on, um, I also did get a quote. One so far, and this is the one I believe that had been in the works for the generator. From Denny's Electric. Um, that's out of Dickinson, this is the one that I believe was being worked on last fall, I called them and they said, yeah, we haven't heard anything for a while from. Um. From Blake, and then um I said, well, he's not a commissioner anymore, can you just send this to me so I can give it to you guys, this is the information, I also talked to. Sarah Montone with Next Era. They are willing to donate money towards paying for this, we just have to get her information once you guys approve the actual bid. There was another company that came out on Monday. To give us a quote, I have not heard back from them yet, it was Sabretooth Electric out of Besmark. Um, but, this is what they had been working on, and this would be a whole building generator. Um, they would remove the old one, that's the one quote here, and then. Replace it with. This other one, and it would be located outside, instead of in the boiler room, which is probably not a bad thing.
So we're a quote of everything would be over for, just a hair over forty two thousand?
Yup.
Says Next Era committed how much?
They didn't say, they didn't commit how much, she said she, I told her I didn't have any solid quotes, I talked to her before I got this one. Um, and she said they just need to be kept in the loop, but it's apparently cleared all of their attorneys, so the hurdle of. That part is done, they just have to go to their committee for donation information. That approves this, but it sounds like. They're willing to cover. At least most of it.
Do you wanna wait for a second bid?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, we can do that, that's fine.
Still next one, Jay.
Yup, yup.
You know, my only concern with that, this got a. March twenty one deadline on it.
I can contact them, I think they have to, they have to put. A date on these quotes when they give them, because supply and demand and the cost of that, but I can contact them after the meeting and just say, hey, we're gonna wait till next month, can I just get an updated quote?
Sure, okay. Next.
Um. Do we wanna talk about House Bill twelve seventy nine? Since Casey's here?
Yeah, there's stuff for whatever, right? Actually, we're ahead of schedule, Casey, if you wanna.
So everybody knows Casey is the Casey Voight from Mercer County, he's one of the new county commissioners up there. If you wanna get a free beer out of him, good luck.
This is just straight out of the red book, but it has a reference to coal conversion taxes.
Lee, I don't know if you can hear me, but I'm Casey Voight, and I'm here on behalf of local governments, I guess. There is a House Bill twelve seventy nine currently has passed through the House, and I was waiting for a hearing at the Senate. And it is to give a ten year exemption to coal conversion taxes. Um, a little bit of the history on that, the reformulation was done back in two thousand five. And then there's kind of a chart that shows the different contributions that have been given over the last ten years. Um. The coal conversion taxes in lieu of property taxes. So I don't know the exact increases that Oliver County has experienced, but Mercer County has more than doubled over the last fifteen years. So. I've been down and testified at the House hearing and was looking for. A larger portion of the. Coal conversion tax, so currently, the formula for it is a eighty five percent of it goes to, it's a two percent. Uh gross receipts tax, eighty five percent of that goes to the state, and that is the portion that is exempt. Fifteen percent of that goes to local governments, that is divided between the three counties in coal country. Uh McLean, Oliver, and Mercer. And then that is also divided by all incorporated cities within those counties, and all school districts within those counties. Um. My thoughts were to try and. Get that to where it was more keeping pace with our property taxes, which would be somewhat of a double. Um, industry has indicated that they would be open to changing the eighty five fifteen split to a seventy thirty. That would be more in line with what the oil and gas taxes are, they are seventy thirty, seventy percent for the state. And thirty percent for local counties that are affected. Um. I guess I'll pause there, if you guys have any questions on some of that information.
Uh, just Casey, this issue was brought up, I believe it was in the twenty seventeen uh session. That it was a, a bill brought up to totally eliminate the conversion tax. And uh, it had a lot of support from the legislature. And uh, at that time, we, we felt we were really fortunate to be able to maintain that fifteen percent. And uh, we were kinda thankful that we had the right lobbyists in the right place at the time to save the conversion at that time. So, I always have, I have a little, little problem when we open that issue again, to try and increase it, cause if. There's a chance it could go the other way, so, that's kind of my little history of what I know about the. The coal conversion. So, I appreciate you, you're working on that, but uh. I get, I get a little nervous about what the legislature could do. If we wanna change something.
I think we all do.
That's my sense.
Yes, and I understand that, and then that's why I've kinda reached out to industry and I've talked to them some also. And they are willing to make an amendment to increase it to a seventy thirty. And then that amendment would be voted on separately, so if it did fail, then the bill would go ahead as written. Or if it would pass, then it would be an amended version of that. Um. The problem that I'm struggling with at this time is industry is asking all counties to lift their moratoriums. So that they would be willing to increase this uh. Formula to where we get more representation. Um, yeah, like I say, in two thousand five is when this formula was adjusted. So that's been twenty years, and now they're looking for another ten year. Um, I think it's just shifting a lot of burden uh onto our residents in form of property tax. So I guess to get into the dollars then, um, if you go to page seventeen of that handout, in two thousand twenty four. The state collected just a little over four billion dollars on the fifteen percent contribution. So if we could get that changed to thirty, then we would have a chance of doubling that money, and then that would be. Up to ten years is what this bill is for. Um. There will be some changes with that number, because that is based on production, and. There is fluctuation in some of the production, as you see on the chart there, uh, the general trend the last ten years have been a slight decrease in production. Um, whether that continues or whether it starts to go the other way, um, I don't see it changing a lot, I guess.
I guess what worries me about it is, nothing's guaranteed, if we drop our moratorium. They don't pass it, which Kenny, uh Casey and I have talked about, then we're.
We have to restart the process all over again.
So I've been on the phone a couple times with Keith Bean, have you had a chance to talk to Mercer County at all yet, Lab and that bunch, or? Or between, I mean?
Yes, I have talked to Lab and I've talked to Steve and Lee, their chairman, and they are on board that they think this is something that we should support and try and go after. Um, they obviously haven't had a board confirmation, and I am here on my own behalf, I don't have a Mercer County Board confirmation. But I have talked with our board members about it, and I have talked to our State's Attorney, Todd Schorze about it, and everybody. Seems to agree that there is a need for an increase, because. I mean, if this ten year exemption would take place, that would be a thirty year period of. The conversion tax, which is in lieu of property taxes, not changing. So. I'm sure a lot of our residents would appreciate if their property taxes were frozen.
For thirty years, yeah. I haven't looked on the thing, have you seen when they're even gonna address it yet, the seventh day?
They put out the schedules on Friday afternoons, so it hasn't been scheduled yet, but it could be scheduled tomorrow. Um, the last time when it went to the House, I found out three thirty Friday afternoon that the hearing was gonna be at nine fifteen Monday morning, so. Sometimes it can be very short notice. Uh, the bill itself was introduced in mid-January and it was only on the docket for like two weeks, and it was already up for a hearing, so. It went through the House fast, I, I don't know if that. Is an indication that it will go through the Senate faster than an average bill or not, I don't know that.
I did speak to Anna Novak, who is the sponsor of this bill, or she, this is her bill. Um, and she, this was a couple of weeks ago, so I don't know if some information may have changed, but she did say that. The portion talking about increasing the county's share of the conversion tax. Would be an amendment that she would have to introduce. And she's said she's not willing to do that if it could kill her bill, which there has been talk by senior legislators that. Counties asking for more money. That have moratoriums in place, they don't wanna. Do that, and so they, that could possibly jeopardize her bill. From my understanding, I don't think the amendment itself has even been introduced yet, I think it's still at the ten year. Um, exemption for coal plants currently, and that's where it's at, because of the risk of. Her bill just failing altogether, um. And she did say, yes, like, they, it. Legislators especially are asking us to lift our moratoriums. Um, I spoke with Planning and zoning about this bill the other night, um, one person said, let's lift the moratoriums, but the rest were saying, hold on a minute. We don't wanna do that. Because we put them in place to protect our citizens, and we want time to address concerns that we have with these industries coming in. Obviously, they're aware that you as commissioners get to make that decision, but, I mean, we did put these in place for a reason. And just to lift them for the potential of getting more money.
Is risky.
Is a little risky, and, I mean, that's just my opinion, but there's no guarantee that this amendment is even gonna pass, so. Or get introduced at all, I don't know if it is or not, I haven't spoken with Anna recently, so I don't know for sure, um, but. That's just been discussions that I've had and that I've talked to other people about, that. For the min, I mean, for us, we budget a hundred and fifty two thousand for coal conversion money. We double that, it would bring us to about three hundred thousand per year. It, it's. A decent amount of money, but what happens if? We don't get it, and then we, yeah. But again, obviously up to you guys, but that's just conversations that I've had with a few people.
I don't like these ultimatums.
So I have talked to Anna, and it's been a couple of weeks, but she said if. I would be willing to do the legwork to get the support of local governments, which would include lifting of moratoriums in Oliver County. That she would be willing to put in an amendment for the seventy thirty, which would correlate with the oil and gas taxes. Um, it's my understanding at the legislature, most of the time the amendments are introduced at the hearings. Um, the House, you cannot make amendments on the floor, but in the Senate, they can make amendments when it's being voted on before. So the two, the two chambers do have slightly different rules. But yes, I think working through Anna with this, so we have the support of industry is the best option.
Mercer County's in favor of?
We lifted ours, we had a moratorium on ore processing only, and it was similar to your guys', we're strictly. Rewriting our ordinances and wanting to get them updated so that we cover some of these new industries, and. I guess the consensus of the board was that it wasn't really necessary, because there's no permits being applied. And I believe it was Lad Erickson commented that even if you do get. A pending permit, you can say, we wanna put a hold on this until we have our ordinances updated.
It's true.
Okay.
That's true.
And you guys, your wind ordnance, that's final now, that's over.
Right.
It's no longer in effect.
So we have them updated, the wind and solar, and now we're, I have an R F P to have all of our ordinances updated again.
Yeah, I probably have a, I'm good.
Okay, go ahead, Lee.
Oh. And what we're discussing right here, actually, it's, I believe, four different things we've talked about here in this discussion, um. One of those lifting the moratoriums totally. Another was, which looked like we kinda combined them a little bit, was this ten year exemption of what we call the tax holiday. Which we, we want to extend for another period of time, which, which I think is great. And then, then we talked about increasing the amount of conversion tax from fifteen to thirty percent, which I think is dangerous. And then the other one uh is uh the moratorium, uh, when Lad Erickson was at our meeting uh recently. Uh, he's, he presented a kind of a spec, he would like to see a study done from the coal conversion counties. Joining together. To design what's best for the, the coal conversion counties, or for the three counties. So those are the things that uh, I think we've just talked about here. And uh. I think the one is dangerous, the other, the other two, I, well, the moratoriums uh. I think we should lift, be, because uh, we're, we're going to lose a lot of backing from, from the state. And uh, the moratoriums uh could uh. Could lead to problems between Oliver County and, and the state as far as future development. So these are the four things there that, I think we just discussed in a roundabout way, all four of us, am I correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, and then talking about some of the issues coming down from the state, um, there was a Senate Bill twenty two oh eight that was gonna. Basically punish the counties if we did have moratoriums, that bill did fail, but there is a similar bill in the House, and I, I looked for. Basically punish the counties if we did have moratoriums. That bill did fail, but there is a similar bill in the House and I, I looked for the number, I didn't find it right off him.
Twelve fifty-eight.
Twelve fifty-eight, and that has similar consequences to moratoriums.
Well, that's ordinances, not even just moratoriums. It's the ordinance in general. If you have something that can, is against an energy. Industry.
No, yeah, what, what, what that, what the, what both those bills talked about was. You know, if you have ordinances that are contrary to what, what the PSC says, I think, um. I have to reread it, but yeah, it was, if you have ordinances that are contrary to what state law is, then you're going to lose out on some funding.
That's my understanding also.
It wasn't as obvious as twenty-two oh eight, the twelve fifty-eight one, I believe, so.
But we can, Patrick, if somebody comes in with something next month, we can put a hold on it.
Yeah.
Until planning and zoning.
Yeah, I mean, you don't, you don't have to approve these permits.
And I think within a reasonable ti- you can't indefinitely say no, but I think you're allowed to say. You need to give us some time. We're currently working on ordinances or, you know, something of the like. But, I, you know.
What's your opinion? Well, I've been on the fence because like I said, I've been talking to Casey, I've called Keith a couple of times, I've called PSC. I talked to Jack with them a little bit and I'm not sure what, what the right decision, so. I'm kinda gonna rely on what Lee's wisdom, because he's been at it for twenty-two years. So Lee, your idea is to lift the moratoriums for now and take a chance?
I would think that would, that would be what's recommended and, and I understand now, I didn't know till right now that Mercer County. And already, uh, lift their moratoriums be- because of. If we have them, that's telling the state that we probably don't, don't want new industry to come in. It's the way a lot of them look at it and a lot of the powerful leaders look at it that way.
Right.
So I, my, my, my thoughts are we should lift moratoriums and we should also. Drop any thoughts we have of increasing the conversion tax from fifteen to thirty percent. That's my two recommendations.
Do you wanna make that in the form of a motion, Lee, that we lift the moratorium? For both of them?
I'm thinking on this one. Right now, uh, I, I don't know the, what was decided that the last planning and zoning. And, uh, I kinda hate to take an issue if they decide that they wanna keep on. But as commissioner, I guess we have the authority as commissioners, so yes, I will make that motion, that we drop the moratoriums.
Do you wanna table it till after the, till the end of the meeting?
What's, what's the recommend?
Uh, uh, that's.
So.
Let's, is there a second, then we'll discuss.
One second, then we'll discuss it.
I'm not sure yet. That, that one makes you think a lot when you look at all the bills and we both been dealt with a capital bunch and. I'm not sure where to go with that.
Okay, at this point, I will withdraw my motion and recommendation until we put further thought into it.
What's the recommendation of planning and zoning again, Jay?
Um, when we met on Thursday, there was one board member who felt that we should lift the moratoriums, um, because. It looked like we were saying no to industry, that we don't want them here. Um, after discussion with the other board members, they said, no, that's not the case. It's not that we don't want industry here. It's just that we wanna make sure that we're taking care of the people that live here first. Um, there was one that said, yes, lift the moratoriums, and the rest said, no, I, we want time to think about this, come up with an ordinance. Um, and, you know, do right by the people that live here, who had also requested putting these moratoriums in place, so.
First place.
Yeah. So that was what the Planning and Zoning Board had kinda said at our meeting, um. But obviously with full acknowledgement that, you know, their word is basically just an advisory recommendation. And you as commissioners can make the final decision, but I mean.
Put a lot of merit in what they tell us to. Well, and the other way to look at it is, uh, like Casey said, the bill could come next week. And. We take a chance, lift the moratoriums, and the state does go for this, it's a plus for the county, like a lot of money.
Over ten years of that.
If, uh, if, uh, Anna's amendment doesn't go through. Then we're, we're at a dead end, so that's why I don't know what the right decision is.
So it's, we're just talking about the amendment.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes. Main, the main focus of lifting the moratoriums.
Just because of that amendment, yeah.
Yeah, which hasn't been, as far as I know, been introduced yet, but I haven't checked the updates on that bill recently.
I, I don't think she will until the hearing, so whenever the hearing is scheduled.
Yeah.
She'll probably be contacting us. But they could still get their ten-year extension.
Well, that's the main idea of the bill is to give coal plants the ten-year tax holiday.
And I think once that is done, it's gonna be very difficult to change and get an increase for ten years. Now being this is up for discussion on a bill, I think this is the window of opportunity for us to try and ask. So for a little more support to the county level.
Are you saying if the moratoriums are lifted, that that amendment is going to be put into the bill?
It'll be introduced.
She would amend, she would introduce the amendment.
It hasn't been introduced or voted on yet, so it's not even a.
Well, she said she's gonna.
Option that it'll pass. I mean, she may introduce it, but who says that the, the committee or the Senate is gonna say, yep, we're gonna pass the amendment. And the bill. I mean, that's kind of where you.
Talking with industry, they seem to feel that it's not that big of an ask because it is making the coal industry. Parallel to the oil and gas industry, which is a seventy-third.
Doesn't affect industry, it's just removing state's money around.
Yeah, it's not even their money, it's just the state's money.
Yeah, they're, they're built the same. Just who's getting the check.
Not changing anything to the industry side of things. It's just right where that money's getting paid to.
Uh, I think it does increase a little bit because right now eighty-five percent is going to be exempt. In fact, it is, and then they want to extend that, where that would go to seventy percent exemption. But it's my understanding also with these conversion taxes is they are passed through, so ultimately they are paid by the ratepayers. And according to the Late Night Energy Council, they have two million customers. Well, we have about seven hundred and eighty thousand residents in North Dakota. So more than half of that would be coming from out of state ratepayers.
It still doesn't affect the coal plants, though. They're just getting a, an extra ten years of not having to pay taxes. And the state is just covering it, similar to this primary residence credit.
Okay.
People apply for that, the state just pays their taxes, basically. It's not coal plants having to pay more or less, it's not. Anything like that. It's just the state's money being shifted from eighty-five percent going towards this and fifteen percent going towards us. To potentially thirty percent going towards us and seventy percent going towards this other thing. It's just the state's money. They're just divvying it up a little different.
Well, I mean, the difference between fifteen and thirty percent, if it happens, is quite a bit.
Yes.
Yeah.
The other thing is, is if that passes and we're on the outside looking in, we're walking away from a lot of money. I'm not saying that we should do this. What I am saying is that if someone comes with a, a request for a permit. We still are working on getting the ordinance in place that we want. We can delay it a little bit. You know, I think, I think it's wise to consider what, what we could be walking away from. While at the same time understanding that nothing's on the table, but.
I mean, the only thing I would say in, in just talking about walking away from it is we'd be walking away from the money, but I don't think that. They can exclude Oliver County from getting coal conversion tax and giving an increase to the other counties. It's an all or nothing from my understanding.
Yep, it is. It is. All three counties are not.
But still.
Two of those three counties. I, I, I don't know what the right thing to do here is, but I can say from, from my perspective. It's highly unlikely, based on what I've seen, that any ordinance that we pass, regardless of the intention behind it. Will withstand scrutiny in our court system if it's contrary to what PSC wants. That there, so I know we've all taken a look at what's going on in South Dakota now and they, you know, they got a. They got a legislature that's gonna pass a bill. We'll see how that holds up in federal court on their issue, which is different than what we're talking about here. But. I just, I don't think that any ordinance we pass that's contrary to PSC is going to withstand scrutiny. Um, that's my opinion, based on what I've seen with legislation in the past, based on. Listening to PSC opinions. Um, so that's just my own opinion, doesn't mean I'm right, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do.
I guess maybe to touch on some of Jayden's numbers, and you're saying you're budgeting for a hundred and fifty thousand. If that number is right. Then like the city of Center would be in line for about a hundred and twenty thousand. The school, center school district would be in line for about a hundred and twenty thousand. So, you know, as a community, you could lump all those together.
I don't know.
Closer to four hundred thousand.
I don't know how much the city and the school get for coal conversion. I just know that.
Forty percent of the portion, and then the cities, incorporated cities are thirty percent and school districts are thirty percent. So within all the county, you have one incorporated city and one school district, so.
Well, we have multiple school districts. It's just that.
So they should get about seventy-five percent of what the county gets, is what I was looking at.
Is that one fifty? Is that total or?
That's total what we budget for every year.
So is that the county share?
Our, that is what we get deposited now. If it's similar to in lieu of property taxes, then we also have to apportion that out.
That's my question.
Have to ask Laura for sure, and I don't know that she's here. I would say we don't actually get to keep all of that, but that's, I, I would have to ask Laura for sure how she apportions that out. If it gets apportioned similar to all the other things, so if that's our total, a hundred and fifty-two thousand. And we have to share that with the city, the schools, the, all the other taxing entities. We're still not, as a county, getting to keep.
About sixty, yeah.
Yeah.
So according to, uh, the distribution of revenues on the right hand of page sixteen. That does go into the fifteen percent distribution, so that comes straight from the state. They give forty percent to the counties, thirty percent to the incorporated cities, and thirty percent to the school district. So that does not go through the general fund of the county. That's, that's direct payment from the state. Distribution, I guess is the right word.
I think LTAP is here, so if we need to table the conversation a little bit, I think we should.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, um, Lee Brown is here from North Dakota, LTAP.
All right, I'm gonna quiz you on that. So thank you for inviting me, I appreciate it. I'm not familiar with, I, I'm familiar with Rob, but.
Dave Berger?
Dave, I know him.
We've talked before. Ellis County Emergency Manager, HR.
Okay.
Patrick Waters, State's Attorney.
Jaden Schmidt, Auditor. I'm sure I've gotten emails from you a few times, so.
Yes, I feel very comfortable coming here, cause I used to be a deputy auditor in Sheridan County. So Commissioner Room is a place I've been before, so. Um, did you wanna do other introductions of the road crew or?
Um, Kenny Root is our Road Superintendent.
I met you the other day at training.
Awesome, yay.
Merrill Berger is interim supervisor.
Okay. Okay.
The rest are folks from the community.
Okay, great. Yep, and it's great to see them on your faces. But, um, when Rob introduced me in the LTAP, anyone have any clue what that is? Or ever heard of us? Okay, well, that's good, cause then I can give you the information I never heard before. So North Dakota Local Technical Assistance Program is what our program is. We're actually under NESU. And then our parent company is Upper Great Plains Transportation Institute. You guys have heard of that because of the local need study that they do. They project how much money it's gonna take to maintain the roads and, um, the highways, all the local roads. So they do a lot of the research and then our program falls under the educational part. Our program, there's actually fifty-one centers in the United States that are all different. Um, like us compared to New Hampshire, it's way different. But we get our funding from Federal Highway Administration. You know, everybody wants to close areas now. But we're, um, also funded by North Dakota DOT. So the reason why North Dakota DOT steps up is because they want safe roads out there for all citizens. Plus, we also get funding from North, like, pardon. Um, we also get funding from North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. And the reason they contribute to our program as well is to keep everybody safe on their roads. So they don't have to pay claims for liability. So we have a lot of connections throughout the state, um, a lot of connections with transportation people. Um, our road crews, we, um, go out and visit often, we go directly to them for training. So our training this week was work zone safety. It's a very important training, whether it's just temporary work zones that they're working in or permanent. So, um, that's one of our safety trainings, like a technical training that we do that we feel. Every county should have is motor greater operator training. That's our biggest training that we have. We have it by request. So last year we had thirteen different counties that we covered. In the folder that I'm gonna give you, um, it explains the program, what we cover, so. I'm not gonna take up a lot of your time. Um, I also have. I'll give you one in the others. Um, so if you go in the folder and look, there is a stapled sheets here. Of our motor greater operator training.
We can arrest him right now, so.
Okay, so, um, the, the important part of this training is showing what they need to know. And where does that information come from? Who's smart enough to give that information out to? These road crew people who've been in a county for forty-five years. Who's gonna teach them something new? Well, we have operators that come on board with us, they contact with us and then they go out and teach, so to speak. Or instruct or share their knowledge. So, um, the first one though is Butler Machinery, Ryan Larson. He also is an operator, he also trains in safety. So he came on board, he willingly came and said he has some knowledge to share. So he's been a great asset to the program. And the next page is Nathan Miller. He's actually from Slope County. He's the road superintendent down there. He used to be from Wilton County and then he got hired on to Slope County. And he's been there, I believe, twenty-six years. So we reached out to him and asked, hey, you wanna share your knowledge with other counties? He says, yeah, I'll go on with you. And then Ross Hanson, he is from Morton County. And he's been with Morton County, I believe, thirty-five years. So it's nice that we have people locally that can train. Years ago, we had an individual from Minnesota that, um, was, I believe, with Strata. And he did a great job. He knew his roads, he knew his equipment. But when he left, he said, that's it, I'm done. And he didn't understand what the locals do with the public. For instance, the phone calls that you guys get because there's obstacles on the road. He knew. He knew nothing about anything like that, but these instructors do. They know that they have to work with county commissioners. They know that they have to work with the superintendent if they have one. And mostly, they have to work with the public. And so getting them educated in the right way is very important. And why is motor grader one of our focuses? Because we have so much gravel in our state and we have to keep our people safe. I live in Burley County. I drive about fifteen miles on gravel every day to work. And it's important to me that that road is safe. Now, I'm not saying it's gotta be perfect by any means, but it has to be safe. We can't have washboards used right across the road and deep washboards. You need more because, well, the weather is not right to go work on roads. Or a big thing in the counties is the gravel. What kind, and that's not up to the operators. That's up to you as county commissioners. What kind of funding are you gonna put into your road? Are you gonna continue to put not-so-good gravel on every year because it's cheaper? And gravel every year, every year because it gets broke down and doesn't stay on the road like it should. So we talk about that as well because an operator sees that road every day. And if he continues to do maintenance continually, he needs to talk to you guys and say, hey, what can you guys do for me as county commissioners? Maybe you could add clay, which is the important binder for the roads. Adding some clay content to those gravel roads. So um, this is, that's how we kinda cover the classroom part of it. It's only about two hours of classroom. Then we go out to the field. And we spend the whole day there. We say we're done when you guys are done. We have headsets for them so that they can hear the instructor. We actually have two different kinds. The other one, they can talk back. The one set, they can only listen, kinda like that. So um, they, they do very well in the field. We talk to the supervisors, the road superintendents. I converse with them before the training and say, hey, do you guys have somebody that's gonna attend, that's not gonna learn anything? Don't let them attend. We don't wanna ban a pathfinder in there. Someone who says, I've been here twenty-five years and I don't need to be here, and then they have an attitude all day. What does that do? It goes out to the other operators. So that's why I talk to them, hopefully get it set up, and then we come out for the day. Sometimes we went out for two days if they have a large group, so we can cover everyone. But um, that is one of our main programs that we have. And you guys should take a look at this gravel road resources. Um, QR code. All you have to do is scan it in. It goes right to our webpage. Awesome material out there so that you understand more about the roads as well. If you're new to the county, you've been driving on those county roads forever, but what makes a county road? So go out to our resources page. You'll really enjoy the information we have out there. Also, another important sheet is our schedule for training. How we're, um, how we charge for the trainings is it's twenty-five dollars if we have no instructor. So what we're covering then is our printing costs, you know, kind of our staff time. And then fifty dollars if we have an instructor. For instance, this week, I had an instructor from South Dakota Elkhorn, Montana. She came out and we paid for her to come. So then we charged fifty dollars per person. So that's kind of our fee structure. So take a look at the training that's coming up. If you wanna learn more about signing, that's a great class. The first one is April sixteenth. It is not limited to operators. None of our training is. We would love to have county commissioners there. It's great if we were to come to Oliver County for motor grader training, we'd love to have you guys out there. You can learn right along with your operators. So if, if you see any sort of training come, come across, you wanna get registered, let me know. I can help you out. And I'm sure your county commissioners have already gotten emails from me. Okay, great. And then these are just some of our other programs. Well, the Road Scholar Program, they get credit for attending our training. Yesterday, they got six credits for the Road Scholar Program. This is a free program where we track how much training that they take. When they get level one, they get a sign with their name on it, like a yield sign, and then they get a safety vest. The next level, when they have ninety hours, they get a coat. And it has their name on it, and it's, it's a nice winter coat, and they get to pick out the color. And then the next level, level three hundred and fifty hours, plus doing some sort of instruction or writing an article. They'll get um, a heavy, um, high-visibility coat. So um, it's all free for them to go to this training. Or not the training, but to be part in the Road Scholar Program. On the North Dakota LTAP with um, brochure, you'll see on the backside who our staff is. Our director is Brian Higgs. He came over from North Dakota DOT two years ago. He is a highway engineer. So if you have technical questions, I know a lot because I've been there eighteen years. But he knows a lot different things because he's an engineer. So reach out to him. He would be happy to come and visit with you, have a phone conversation. So just reach out.
What was your question Denise?
Yep.
Do you think engineers are smarter than a lot of us?
I'm not gonna answer that. I'm, I'm just not answering the question, but it's a good one. Yeah. So um, that's kind of the content of your folder. I'm gonna leave this stuff with you because we had extra in the office. But one other man that you'll find, I'm gonna leave with county commissioners, one of them, just because we have a shortage of them. And they're not printing them anymore, but they are available online, is a gravel roads maintenance manual. This book was wrote by South Dakota LTAP Director. Federal Highway reached out to him and said, hey, can you write a book for us? Because you know everything about gravel roads. And he was like, yeah, sure. So since nineteen, uh, twenty fifteen, it hasn't been updated. And I highly doubt that it will with the issues that we're having. But things don't change on a gravel road, right? Hopefully, they get better, but this is a great book for you guys to take a look at. When you have the public calling in and saying, why do we have washboards? Guess what? There's a section for washboards in here, and there's Alford's Bridges. It's a nice read. I have it on my stand by the couch because it is uncarried. My grandson, he's fifteen, going on twenty. This last weekend, he took a look at it. He says, this is a cool book. So coming from a fifteen-year-old, here you go. And um, these are just things that we give out at our training resources that we give out. We're always looking for more resources that we can make a person stay easier. So um, do you guys have questions for me?
I believe that book, you guys have one at the shop now, right?
Uh, not that one, but I have it down, downloaded on my phone.
Okay.
I, I have, I have one for the shop.
Motor grader training that I went to, that was through them.
Yeah.
Did you, just you go or did somebody else go too?
No, just me.
Okay.
That was the online portion of it.
Okay.
Oh, online. Yeah. Okay.
Yep. That particular book, we do have it at the shop, not the newest version. Yeah.
I have a whole back tab for you, so you'll be.
Going to trading, I, I volunteer, Rob, because Lee's in Arizona and I'm busy.
Just like that, you're busy. So who does have the road portfolio?
The one that's busy.
Oh, okay. Well, then, yeah, you can nominate someone else. I know how that works. Yeah. And yeah, just feel free to reach out to me anytime. Uh, we're a small office in Bismarck. We're actually in the DOT office. They were kind enough to give us a little spot after COVID. Because everybody went home and was working remotely, so we got office space, so it's great to be there.
So are you on the second floor?
Yes, we are. Mm-hmm. Yes, with local government, so we work closely with them. Anybody else? What did you think of the training?
It was good.
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 One thing you took away from it?
There was a lot of new stuff.
Okay.
Compared to the last time I was through it.
Okay, great, great. Yeah. But it's always good to see a person next, with the next week and see if they like trains.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you Denise.
Yep, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Feel free to reach out.
Well, we will be.
You gotta partake better.
Yeah, they're gonna be good this week.
Probably just go put them back there or where you.
You do what you, whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, mine were handpicked.
So are mine.
Unless you don't like them, then.
Casey or Jim, take your vote. Um, can we take a couple minute break and then everybody come get it going or Deb's Kitchen made fresh coo-ven yesterday?
Do the same thing on the warranty on page two there you'll see it's set up five years seventy five hundred hours premium coverage. He fixes your costs over the course of that term. You're able to budget for the payments and not have some unexpected failure happen, you know, that costs you, costs you money that you weren't prepared for, so.
What kind of payment are we making on the one now?
So that one's at bottom at fifty seven thousand one fifteen.
That's for the new payment.
That would be, yeah, that's the new payment.
I'll look at what we got right now.
Um, so that one, uh, I think they have that actually back five years ago, that payment. Was forty one thousand eight seventy two. Okay, but we did have excuses, but yeah, last year.
Two machines we got.
Right, so last year, last year, the one we did with the wing was sixty five thousand five seventy five.
That would be one being done.
Okay.
The recent payment was lower five years ago was it was all pre-COVID before these machines took their price increases like they have. Nobody, nobody, nobody expected machines to go up twenty five, thirty percent, you know? So. So, yeah, that I guess is what I kinda wanted to run through with you and see if you guys had questions for me or what your thoughts were. Typically, I try to come, you know, I'm always talking to the road superintendents a lot on your cycle. And, and typically I would come in with several months advance. Of course, we kinda went through some changes here that kinda pushed it back a little bit, and so now, now we're here kinda to the point where, you know, curious what you guys are thinking, you know?
Kinda what he's getting at is we need to know.
Sooner rather than later?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So some sheets that's in the, can order and get them here on time.
Yeah.
Amount of time where it will be, um, like that finance is, you know, there's a, I don't feel that.
There is, it, it, there is, I mean, it's, that date is very important and that's kinda like you said, why we've, we've kinda shifted away from that because it's a line in the sand and, and there is no different than our buyback terms, but they're very strict on the condition the machine comes back, you know? Fifty percent tires, no broken glass, you know, no leaks. Now, the machine's under warranty. So what we've done in the past is we come out doing inspection before.
Sure.
So that we did, we utilize that warranty. But, uh, they're, they're just, they're touching, they didn't kind of test. We worked through some and then it, and we got there, but it, it was.
Yeah, who was you do?
Hmm, well, part of it was that, yeah, I think you guys had removed some fenders and it come back and they're like, wait, this was sold with fenders, now we got a fender back. And so there's some of that, you know? It's just, uh, yeah. I wanna make sure there's no question on kinda how we've set them up and why, you know?
Well, Lee, isn't it common practice? You guys try to drill them down a little bit after they present this to us?
So Casey's always been, been fair with us, so always explained everything to us and.
So you, you trust him?
He offers us the best that he can. Oh, you like that?
Thanks, Lee. Deal with him a long time.
I just got one question for you. As far as the way those.
Yes.
On our new machines, are those thick hard blocks?
Yes.
Are we able to?
Yes, go back to that older style that's the fuller wraparound.
More of a rubber, you know, there's give to them.
Yep, it's, it's a wash on the price, so we can swap those easy. Um, just need to know, I remember we talked a little bit about that.
And it covers more of the front tires too, I mean.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, that's an easy change, yep.
Okay.
That's an easy change.
That was our primary concern is everybody had the same concern.
Okay.
You got this, they're cracking up or what?
No, they're, they're solid. So, I mean, if you get a snow pile or anything, they're solid. I mean, fenders are that thick and it's soft, it's plastic hollow and they're so also come right through it. Where the other ones actually give, there's these ones are not, especially when it's forty gold.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
That was my only question.
Yeah. You guys are satisfied with this?
Yes.
Lee, what's your thoughts? I don't think you heard you gave. Lee, do you have any thoughts?
Oh, I just picked up my phone again, uh, do I have any thoughts?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm what, I'm what Casey just presented.
Yeah, do we trust him?
Uh, no, I, I, I think we should just, uh, from the chief of the contract.
Okay, I guess I, I'll make a motion to accept both agreements for the loader end for the new blade trader.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it and I'll just stay in touch and get things kinda changed around and. Look at everybody here, so if you think of anything else in the meantime, I got my number. I got, I know some of you guys got my cards, but that's a few amount, oh, I was gonna give you. Talk to you guys a little bit about that, but we got a little training seminar coming up that the guys from the shop and whoever would like to. Because anybody that wants to, wants to, um, come, so that's a few weeks here, but. We can discuss about that afterwards, I know you guys got a busy agenda here, so.
I'm good, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
We're gonna get a chance.
He, he called me this morning. Just on the way in. Five hundreds. He's gotta take a semi load.
Okay, that's what I was coming up with.
Uh, he said there's a dealer in Jamestown that's got a five hundred on the lot with a death tank. He says, I don't wanna lose the sale, but he said if you need one soon, that's the place to call.
Okay.
And I'll try to find you that contact.
Well, that same token, I was checking on a person that had a nine hundred yesterday. Brought a full load down and it seemed like they were pulling it just fine, but he didn't have a death tank on it either.
Right.
So it might be not, we need to look at the other one first.
Sure.
Uh, just a little update on what we're doing down there. We got pretty much everything. Up, up speed.
Yeah.
Uh, put up all the road restriction signs, they're up as of yesterday.
Yeah.
Uh, they was notified to put it on, but in order for proper people. And of course you answered it, we sent a couple of people to train. Uh, and also we give the sheriff department keys to the gate because they didn't have any for the. On the, on the year, and stuff, so they, they've got the keys for that now, so. Strata was out in one of the road agreement on a thirty six, I think it is.
Yep.
Willer Bowl, while that road.
Yeah.
Anyway, uh, see where Alahouang they're gonna be doing out there and maybe if hit the project. I told him that it was okay to, we could work with a road, uh, agreement on heavy, heavy loads.
And Stratton has to do with the substation?
Yes.
I think we usually do like for gravel, like a haul road agreement.
Yep.
For the number of trucks, they pay X amount.
I told up to five was thousand and then, uh.
Yep.
And then five to ten.
Five to ten was another thousand, yeah, we haven't, the agreement typed up and so when it comes to that point, yep.
Yeah, I did mention it, so he was gonna include that in his bids.
Okay.
And, uh, we took this more, another couple of scrap downs, we got some more. So, so there, we did get some oil from roads, ten thirty and no slip. With the, the Dean's, Dean's well? Yeah, Dean's Bulk Service Drive. He's the one that delivered it, you know, he probably don't know about drop slip pots, that's. Get it come to, and that electrician is. Last time I talked to him last week, you see period, he can start this next week here, so, and some of this stuff. Sounds like there's a lot of that work that he can do. As we're doing normal business, we don't have to shut nothing down or shut anything off, right, and the only thing would be one with the tank and. If we go to get a tank, then we'll have to drop some power and do a few things. But by then we'll be, tank there too, more like it.
Yeah, if we make that decision today, yeah.
On those tanks, um, we were looking over the estimates. The only question I have is this one says for tank pad and this one says set on concrete.
The one on the man that wants concrete.
Yep.
The rest of them all want gravel.
Yeah. They want gravel or they?
Gravel, uh, they want sand or natural finds, no chipper.
No chipper.
Nothing with an edge.
Yeah. Good sand, sand.
Natural finds or sand. Anything with an edge will cut through them eventually. Yeah, I seen this too, they, one had one of the cement there.
I did put it higher too.
Some of them got tanks on the lot, some of them told me ninety days to four months.
Come on from, uh, here, basically.
This one?
Yeah. That's.
They have a tank available? They've got them on.
They got, yeah. And this one here was, we hope that it is, uh, some of the electrical plumbing, I mean, it looks pretty easy compared to some of the other ones, the way they were talking. So, I think this would be the, me anyway, this would be a little move.
I'll be honest, I got abstained because I'm still in the board till the end of March, but you guys said, I mean, that's your recommendation.
I think the, I think the setup is, just by the way that. Everything else is, there might be a, uh, some pump that we need to pull in on the, uh, put on the area, when we put a berm up.
You don't need a berm. These are all double wall tanks. I insist, they all tried to sell me single wall and put a berm and I didn't want that.
Yeah, okay.
The only thing you want, might wanna do guys, that one doesn't have the container for the nozzle to put in it.
Oh, yeah.
Just to keep the snow off of it. I mean, that's up to you guys if you wanna do something.
I can even shed, said it.
I'll go put that.
Yeah. That's, yeah, this is, cause even here, it, it, it does show the smers will pump or anything, so.
She said wire it and go.
Yep. So. And if I put up a little shed, move to that hundred yards or two and heat that building a little bit. Apparently be out.
If it's all right there instead of moving over to the shop.
We don't, you wouldn't even necessarily have to heat it and make those, the toads, and make the heater blankets that slide right over in the building.
So you're just heating.
Anytime you change it all.
Yep. When, when you have to change it out, they could just pump it in, that's what they do.
Oh, okay.
So they don't change it out, they just pump it fills.
So still a two hundred and seventy-five gallon tank or what, two fifty?
Yep, and then you just put a blanket on it, save it on there. So. If you guys want.
Well, that's what you guys think, I mean. It's the best deal and it's gonna work for us. We need to make changes soon, so.
My only comment, guys, is you're going ten to fifteen grand a year in fuel savings.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's, that's my, that's my angle, I suggested this to be.
That's you, three years, that's big.
In by itself, that's right.
I'll make that motion to go with that. Through.
For Enerbase.
Enerbase.
Lee, there's been a motion by Dave to purchase a twelve thousand gallon fuel tank from Enerbase. Uh, they, they were the low bid at forty one thousand three oh five, uh, delivered, plumbed. All we have to do is the pad and the electrical.
Does that come full?
And the, and the tie period on this is what I guess?
This one is in inventory, we could have it here in a day or two if we needed it.
Okay, yeah, I will second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That had to be, but I know by March the first, yeah.
You're good.
Okay.
You're good.
You know, man?
Yeah.
Again, uh.
We better finish. Uh, Lee, did you hear that?
No, I didn't hear that last comment.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
That was the last comment?
Yeah, are you in favor? Okay, motion carried, motion passed. Uh, next, guys.
Next thing?
Yep.
Um, Dr. Dale over on the, on them doors and windows and he stopped out and was, he was, he had everything ordered up and. And he never got a call back on a lot of times, so.
Did that include, uh, five holes in the rough then, or is that?
We didn't talk about that, but I figured once he's there, we'll.
Sure, get it done.
Uh, we'll dump the rest of that, we looked at Kyle yesterday, nine eighty eight.
Sure. A lot of the thousand gallons, that's true.
Uh, the gravel we had tested, he followed me back Sunday, called back yesterday, he said that, uh, with the gravel bits today, if you can open, he's, I told him to write on there which pit that was. And that's gonna be a lot higher, maybe thirty to forty percent reject.
Hmm.
Sand.
Okay.
And I don't know. She was saying.
Finder.
Play, yeah. So. And then I, he, he figured that would be, that would be a bid, but, and that's not counting the royalty, that's because we don't know what.
What they want.
What he wants for that, so.
Right.
Good night.
What he's talking about there is we found a gravel pit, which we didn't. Realize the former commission was told there was none, but they found gravel, so Daryl and I went and looked at it the other day and. So, yeah, if it's not gonna pan out worse, that's okay, we found another one now too, we're gonna look at.
They can make it work, but it's.
What's it gonna cost?
Yeah, it's gonna cost, and we're gonna need to.
Well, my understanding, Mercer County found a bunch, so maybe Casey will just work with us and haul some down.
Yeah, they did help us out last fall.
Well, we're trying to work with him, so.
Any other thing, guys, uh, pick up numbers that you're asking about, I already gave them to you yourselves.
And the decals, magnets?
Uh, magnets will be fine.
Decals, not so much. I know Dave, Dave showed me the one.
Yeah.
So, I think you said that there might be a local person that's starting to do those, so maybe we can get something worked out with them.
Let's see what we can.
But, yeah, maybe try the magnets first and see how they stand up to it.
Well, these are here, you could put them on for now, tell me figure something else out, unless they're gonna peel.
The ma, the, uh.
The stick ones.
The magnetic ones we have on.
Yeah. But as far as the other ones, are they gonna peel off?
The, oh, yeah, don't even wanna put it on.
It won't look good.
No. It's, it's like, it's not just the sticker logo, it's got like a. Big clear filling over the whole thing that says on too. So like.
If it scratches, it's gone.
Yeah. If you wash it, I think if you wash it, it'll.
Hmm.
It's a little desperate.
Okay.
Or not, maybe nothing else. And any words?
Well, one other thing, uh, those of you that didn't know, we never had a lunchroom down there and the guys are pretty well got it finished. We now have a lunchroom, um.
I was up there yesterday, it looks really nice.
They cleaned up the lot when you walk in, the door now, other than the door and the window gotta be fixed, which Gerald said they're addressing. Um, it's a lot cleaner, a lot of, they did a really good job, so thanks. I guess that's all I've got on that.
Oh, yeah, could we add one more thing? Sure, yeah. Are we allowed to do anything with them roads out there?
Oh, yeah.
Within the, the next era's agreement, the agreement roads.
Okay, I guess we should have brought that up with, uh, Mark, but, uh, I'll give Mark a call. Or do you guys wanna talk to him?
According to the agreement that we made with them, they're supposed to maintain those and fix them up to. As good, if not better than what they left them, and if they're not.
I think they're talking currently right now, we gotta get to address.
Right.
We need to get a blade out here.
What he told me the other day is they're, they're looking at bringing one, but they haven't set a date yet, so I'll, I'll check it out.
But if they left them in poor condition, in, in against of the agreement we have with them, I think we have the ability to find them for leaving the roads. Pretty poor.
They have to be in usable condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some. Dip in them at a quarter miles an hour, you get airborne.
Well, figure out what it is and I'll write him a letter if you guys want me to, but I just need to know what we're asking.
Should I call him first or do you wanna write him a letter?
Call him first.
Okay, I'll do so.
Yeah.
He seemed like he's willing to work with us, so if they can get a blade here sooner, and if they want, if they wanna pay the county, we'll probably charge a couple hundred thousand and. Not sure.
It seems reasonable.
But we got the soft spots, you know, like down the.
Oh, yeah.
Basin Road, and then by.
They don't have a deep hole on them.
I mean, it's. No.
One blade, is it not?
No, no. Because the stuff that was put down should actually be rolled with the, the substructure over there before.
And when I talked to him Monday, uh, I brought up a lot of that, however, it's probably gonna have to be taken off and recovered.
A lot of this time we rip.
They didn't say they wouldn't.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll call him and if not, I'll give it Patrick and we'll go from there.
Well, as soon as you can, so get some over there and fix it. You're gonna work on it.
We'll call him today, I'm assuming. Yeah, my secretary's listening, I'm sure she's taking notes, so she'll tell me what I gotta do tonight.
We should be, just contact within the week or not.
Okay.
I would like to meet you through on the morning of the twenty fifth, so I'd like to talk.
Yeah.
I'll be here.
I'll just come out to you.
Okay.
You got my number too?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think so, I know. Yeah.
No, you have to sit there and wait until five o'clock.
It's fine.
Yeah.
Jamie, I'm not sure who's gonna contact next there. But I would also bring to their attention that those have to replace, yeah, the blade to get that substrate.
And that's what I don't get a real offense enough.
Cause I think they're two inches of gravel, it's, there's still pavement underneath and no highway.
Right.
So if they go too deep, it's gonna fall out, so they need to get the washboard cut out of there.
Yeah.
Oh, so they're still concrete under?
Yeah, from the old road back then, but they just did a two inch zip over it.
Okay.
So you can, yeah.
Thanks.
All right.
Sure. Looks like it will.
So, with, with John and Greg here, you guys speak up whenever you want, but. Just wanted to go through some preliminary stuff that we've been looking at for that structure. Um, I guess just as a reminder, March twenty seventh, March twenty seventh, right? Yes. The dates that's set for more of the public meeting to present this stuff to the public, it's gonna be at the courthouse here. But I wanted to get some stuff in front of you guys before that meeting, so you can, you know, leave comments or whatever ahead of time if needed. So if you wanna pull up this one first, one that's got the area on. Um, obviously the north south stretch here is the existing county road. And then to the west is what we're proposing for the bypass road during construction. So, that road will obviously be taken out of service as we're, as we're doing bridge construction, so. Um, if you're looking at it, well, the north end was on there on the sheet there, if you're, if you have questions on that. So, um, this is designed to have forty-five mile an hour speed, the, the curves coming into the bypass road. You can always post it differently, if you wanna look at thirty-five miles an hour, cause it's a, it's obviously a new road that people aren't gonna be used to. That's pretty common to design it to have a higher speed than what it's supposed to for, so you have the option of looking at whatever for that. Um, the intent right now, schedule wise, is to award a contract sometime mid-summer, I would say mid, early summer. Um, contract award mid-summer of this construction season. With the idea of getting this bypass road built this year yet. Now, whether we close the bypass road off to traffic through the winter, or close the regular road, we're still working through those details. But the intent would be to have this built this year yet. And then next year, the contractor could get it right in there and start with the bridge construction, so. Um, that's tentative stuff, we're still working on the B and I M F. And then I guess any questions on that specific?
Yeah. So how far up are we going into the Lakewood property off the Bay Road?
Right now, this is about, I think it's like four hundred feet away.
Right.
Yeah, to the west.
Yep, and then where would you come in on the dresser line by his cattle pass? How far north of that, where south of that, that would be?
It's, it's just north of the cattle pass. All right. Just, it's all.
South of cattle pass.
Or bypass, oh, yeah, sorry, bi- bypass, yeah.
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 I was thinking bridge.
Yep, yep, yep. So, yeah, and I don't know, Greg, if you have any comments on the cattle pass or?
No, I talked to Brian about it and I told him like long-term, the bridge won't affect it, this is bypass, that's what he thought.
Yep.
But the bridge, the long, the long-term disturbance, cause the bridge will be, that's when I said south, the bridge will be, yes, south of that.
Then how far north of, uh, Jesse's Tree Rolls? Cause you gotta be pretty close, you're gonna stick with that forty-five.
Looks like.
That's what I'm, oh, I see the picture, yeah.
Yep.
So that's it, a big dip, where you're gonna come up then, right? There's a big dip right on the north side of these trees.
Probably just on the north side of it.
Yeah, I'll show that, I think a lot of that thing for balance and I'll cut bills too. Yep, so, yeah, there's gonna be a fair amount of reading just in general through this area with the terrain and stuff, so. Um, likewise with the bridge itself, so. Any other questions on this piece of it?
Does the sheriff have any problem with this? Cause he's gonna be flying out there someday, I'm sure.
Okay, well, we'll keep working on posted speed limits, things of that nature. Um, and then if you all take this one, which has, one that's got a little color to it, I was. It actually gravel cheese, cause you're, I'm gonna wanna do a little bit of comparison, but the one that's got a little color to it, that's the proposed structure. Do you not have one?
No, I just got the one with the color. It's okay. Thank you.
I guess I'll just quickly point out the one with color, um, as Greg's talking about, that cattle pass on that north end, we're tying in. Um, the, this top line you're seeing is the new profile of the road. So we're tying back in with the existing road, road as Greg had mentioned just prior to that cattle pass. So, just, just off that cattle pass. Uh, we did put some grades on here that show the existing grades of the road versus what the design grades as of today are. We're still working close with John and his group on the design, so this isn't the final thing or anything. But I know that was something that the county was curious about, so. If you look at the change in grade, you're going from a one point eight as you're coming up, as you're, as you're heading north. Um, to about a, a negative three point eight, so the difference in grade is, you know, five and a half-ish. And then if you look to the other sheet that doesn't have the color, that's that bridge, that structure, that's just north of this, the existing structure.
By the gun club.
Well, north there.
Yep.
North of gun club.
And that shows the grades coming in a lot of that as well, cause I know that it's, it's just good for comparison purposes. Um, if you use that three point eight, that's on the, the north side of that structure and that four and a half coming in, again, this is existing grade as of today. You're, you're close to eight percent as a difference in grade. So, the feel of this one should feel signi- significantly better than that existing one out there. Um, I guess, you, you're also showing the existing grades on that, it'd be the. The lustrifying road on the bottom of that colored one, that's the existing road today. So, um, I guess any questions on those at the top of your heads?
I guess I'll go back to what Daryl would said a couple of years ago about having it more level and then going venture to you. What are the odds of getting that down a little more? I guess the big thing would be, so we're not doing what we have to do in the south. If you're coming from the south and you're going north, you can't see what's coming, and you've seen that.
Hmm.
And that's gonna be a big concern, how are we gonna compare on this one? Are you gonna be able to see the traffic coming if you've got two semis doing this, which we're gonna have a lot of?
Yep. It, it's designed to meet that speed for site distances, so we have to, and we have to design it that way. Um, it's, like I said, it's gonna feel better and look better than the existing bridge to the north, but it still does, and you can see it's still looking out. You know?
How, how deep is that gonna be into the haul road then?
From the bridge to the haul road?
Yeah, I mean, is, is the haul road gonna have a dip to it or?
Yeah, how many feet do you guys have below?
Yeah, we're, on the west side, we're climbing up at almost a five, four to five percent grade just to get back up.
How much?
Um, four to five percent grade on our haul road, on the west side to climb back up towards.
That'd be empty, right?
That'd be our empty.
Yeah.
Yep.
Most of it be coming downhill.
Yes.
So you, both, uh, as far as the, we gave them this proposed, or haul road.
So you, uh, as far as the, we gave them this proposed haul road grade underneath the structure. And that was initially laid out to look at our drains, so we're gonna be requiring down some sediment ponds to capture all our runoff into mining disturbance there, and that was trying to find a line that would still allow us to drain gravity flow into those ponds. And so it's kind of, we tried to get it down with pulses we could, but.
Can't drain right off the side of the bridge.
We, yeah, the, it gets, it gets tricky on controlling all that water on the west side of the road with where the, the mining disturbance is planted, and the way the topography is there.
That's pumps and all that good stuff, huh?
What's that?
Don't have pumps and all that stuff that can be used?
It's more getting area big enough to control the acreage. You know, that's the, we have to contain a certain storm event in that, that area. Getting rid of water once it's stored, no, that's not a problem, we can pump it if we have to, but.
This is just a.
Oh, under the bridge. You know, I guess that's, we haven't pursued the option too much. You know, there's something we could look into, I guess, and see, but, yeah, we haven't pursued trying to do any kind of a sub pump or anything like that to try to control that water.
The, the bridge, the one with color on it, the, the new structure sheets, that is a pretty haul road's gonna be, if you look at where, where the bridge is and the, the bottom of where the haul road's gonna be. So it gives you a sense of where versus today's road elevation, where that haul road's gonna be.
So some of that haul road's gonna be below that big hill on Jesse's with all the sandstone? Just about straight left of it?
We are actually, we're, we're cutting a hill out to put our road through.
Okay.
And the valleys on either side of our road, so we're gonna actually be cutting through, excavating out to put the road in.
And then it won't be any blasting to do that, that'll all be?
Yeah, we don't intend to do any blasting. If we do, we're hoping that's just enough to bust up mobile equipment, or, or, if you have to.
Cause I guess going back to a couple of years ago, when we had all the blasting problems from, when you guys were doing it, that we get the seismographs out there if it is a problem, if you do that.
Yep. No, we'll definitely, that wouldn't be our intention to for this small area, but.
Another thing I could do, John and I were just talking about this, but that, that hill just, the existing hill just, uh, south of where this bridge is proposed to be, that has a pretty significant, um, now, the terminology deal, great difference, I guess, running along. Um, we didn't take survey all the way back to the south there, but I think it'd be pretty easy for either the mine or us to go up and gather some info, just, cause then if nothing else, you have a reference of today's existing hill versus what this bridge is gonna feel like. Bridge will feel a little different, cause there's gonna be a hundred and twenty feet of about a flat grade on top of it, so it's not a crest quite like even the state hill, but. But if that'd be helpful information for all of you, I've got my, I hope that. It's more, yeah, we, we've got, obviously you see it's between two point one and two point five from the dominant, but we don't have.
Do you need a bigger study?
Yeah, I know when I say the grade difference is five and a half on this new structure versus a totally existing structure, it's, it's hard to tell. What does that feel like or whatever, but, but it is an improvement, so.
So then the bypass road, the detour, what, uh, when would you wanna start that? When, what would it take?
We don't, we don't have like a date yet, they have, so, um, I don't, I don't know. I mean, typically, when you hire a contractor, the more flexibility you give them on their contract to build it, the, the better.
And that wouldn't affect the county road at all anyway?
No, no, it, I mean, we coordinate with all of you as far as mostly the winter. And it's mostly gonna be, do we shut down, do we look at shutting down the existing road and using the bypass through the winter? Or do we just keep the bypass closed and use the existing road? That's the biggest coordination we have with all of you. And people are gonna have to use the drive-in number anyway, because it's gonna be a place for a year and a half or whatever, so.
And then that's gonna be the same width as the dome?
We're designing it out of those new county roads.
Um, where are we going here, right? Bridges or up where we, where?
Yeah, it's legal straight bells.
Station fourteen, I was gonna say, that's right through here, I think.
See, I have fourteen.
Okay, I'm basing it on four.
Yeah.
I wasn't looking at station, sorry, that's not.
Like right as the creek goes up.
Cause that little dip that you were talking, Dave, would be here. Is there any way a guy could blend those two together so you have that bomb site? You know, if you're coming down, it's, you wouldn't have that other dip after that.
Isn't that kind of all that is already looking like?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure essentially saying cutting down the existing road, the flat events.
Well, I was just wondering where the bridge was from here, you know, versus, like you said, you know, with that little dip in the back. That was my own question.
So is that where this is coming down here?
That's what I wondered.
Yeah, yeah, so kind of at the crest of that existing hill is where we started. Yep. That dip to come.
Yep, yep.
Coming from the south.
Now, this outfit, are they doing the whole project, like the haul road down to the creek and everything, or is that separate or? While you're, where you're crossing the creek to the east?
So we'll be.
You guys are doing it?
Yeah, someone that's a few hundred feet inside the bridge, just to make it easier for their design portion, then we'll tie into that part. After, but the creek, the creek crossing is ours.
So if the county needs any roadwork done, we did a couple miles and steal this guys.
The other thing I guess I'll point out is, should be looking at the extent of the, the tying points on here. You're looking at roughly two thousand feet, so just sort of half a mile of new profile on this road and, and the point in that and talking with John and the county and stuff is tying in up the crest of that hill again was much better than how you see the first view you got on. Where's that grade is gonna be, um, and then we do have the restriction over here with the cattle, we use the cattle passes as the restriction on the north side too. And then if you look at the, the older structure, you're looking at up to I don't know, fourteen hundred feet or so of killing, what I'm quoting, so. It is a little, it's more gradual, I guess. It's not one till like more, it's a little help to feel it too.
And this will include guardrail at both ends, like the existing one, no problem?
Yep.
Okay, what time did we have that meeting on the twenty-seventh? Did we set a time?
I'd say it's four to six. Yep.
Okay, that's right here, right?
We'll be here four to six for people to
And this'll progress a little bit in the next couple of weeks, but it'll be some like type of information that we'll be sharing.
Probably have maybe a little more information on the bypass.
Yep. But if there are questions or comments or concerns or whatever in the next couple of weeks, track us down, we'll take a look at other options if needed and work with you guys.
So when they decided on the five and a half foot, is that a big deal to go to say four foot or what? I don't wanna be impossible, but I know we dealt with for twenty years on that other one, so, you know, it's gonna be a concern to the landowners.
Look, I think you're, you're.
Yeah, the grade, the five, five and a half foot grade down, which the other one I believe is what, eight something?
Eight, it's about eight, if you look at the, so the, the grade differential basically coming in at a one on the other side. Yep.
And, you know, as Jim just kinda indicated, the, the thing that we were trying to do were giving more direction to, you know, how, how can we do this was more than that's helping point to the top of that, so it wasn't having that under client. And then the other one is the north, like I said, we felt a little restricted once we got up to that cattle pass again, if that's something that we really wanted. That's the kill all, I'm sure we can always work with Brian on that, but that was something we're trying to keep in place, we didn't have to, to tour around those routes, but.
When you say that climb coming out of there, how can you read that bridge? How long is it gonna be?
Um, mean like one to the east, one west?
Yeah, we're, I gotta try to think here, very noise. You know, our initial disturbance is gonna be, it's gonna be actually, it's a good reference on this bypass road. Our initial disturbance for mining is probably one to two hundred feet west of that bypass road, that's where we'll start stripping as the other tops will subso. The first pit will be another probably four hundred feet beyond that.
You're talking like a couple of feet, you're climbing that up?
Yeah, it will, it'll be easier at the beginning, cause as we establish our first pit, we're obviously going in the ground quite a bit, so we're, we're coming out, we'll be able to go right to our bench to get into the pit. As we reclaim, get our full swing topography, there'll be a longer term, longer stretch coming up that hill for us to get.
But it's empty, so.
That's empty, yeah, we're going down all the.
Never saw it.
What's that?
Well, we'll have to, yeah.
Well, I think like we talked the other day, that just a lot of semis that go, you know, with the hay and the grain and the cattle, it's gonna be a lot of traffic. So then the bypass, the gravel. You're not gonna put on what, gotta put on out west? Cause, uh, Chris will be informing me, I want that approved.
Nah, it'll have to be sourced, we don't, we don't have any gravel to do with, right?
That'll be a chance to get some money and mercy from anybody. Yeah, I guess that's it for now, for the meeting.
Yeah.
I think a lot of her gonna watch it, listen to what we said already, so.
Good. Yeah, and like you say, any questions that would be helpful for the meeting, we appreciate it, so. Kinda get your, uh, people on seeing you here.
Um, can we pause this discussion with Jim? Because we have bid opening and we're behind on that, so.
I can also be down.
Well, you were gonna talk flex funding, so, I just, like, if we can pause for just a couple minutes and do bid opening, cause we're behind schedule on that one. Just to get that out of the way, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, I have one for fuel and lubricants. And a letter opener. I have one for each of the different deals here, so. To comment here in the meeting, but I just wanna get those out of the way, cause I know we have at least one person here, so.
Where's the deed post works?
Jade, that's the only one we've got in.
That is the only one that we have for fuel. Um, we only received that from Rude Oil, so.
Lee, we got one bid for fuel and gas, oil. For rudes. They are subject to change with the markets, which we understand. You with us, Lee?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Um, do we need to read it or do, do we just wanted to accept it at this time? Being it is subject to change with the markets, could be different tomorrow.
I do believe you're required to, to read.
Okay. Uh, unleaded gas, two fifty-six-five, number one diesel, two sixty-four-nine. Number two diesel, two forty-nine-nine. Uh, ten thirty oil, sixteen forty-nine. Hydraulic fluid, nineteen ninety-nine, DEF fluid, two thirty-nine. Uh, windshield washer fluid, two fifty-nine. Canafreeze, eleven seventy-nine. Uh, grease, forty-four ninety-nine. Um, and then there's also a quote here for two seventy-four-nine at the pump. And that says at the bottom, uh, federal, federal taxes will be exempt.
That should be all you're required to read off of that.
Okay. You guys have any comments on?
One bid, I will make a motion to accept the bid.
There's a second, all second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried.
Next one we have is rental construction equipment. We just got one bid from Branko.
And on that, you don't have to read all these, but there's hundreds of them.
That's the only bid too?
Yeah, that is the only bid, yep.
Yeah, there is a rather extensive listing here, Lee. They've also sent their contractor's license and certificate of payment stuff with, and liability insurance. Looks acceptable?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for Branko.
Lee, there's been a motion to accept Branko's bid.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, motion carried. Uh, gravel crushing bids?
Yep, I have one from Sundry Sand and Gravel, who also brought those cookies.
The only bid?
You are the only bid.
I, I wanna go out and change it a little bit.
You got a half minute.
Nope, deadline was one o'clock, sorry. Nope, deadline was one o'clock, sorry.
There is an out on the bottom of this one, yes. If you wanna leave that remote. Uh, I gotta figure out what they need. Oh, three quarter and under, seven eighty five a yard and one inch of seven sixty a yard. With a twenty thousand cubic yard minimum. Class five, uh, down along the river would be ten eighty five a yard. I'm assuming the minimum would be the twenty thousand?
Right, well, whatever's in there is in there, I have no intention of.
Okay.
No, he talked to me about those twenty to thirty, but there's also other feet let's drain, we didn't put twenty dollars in.
Right.
Only one hundred and twenty thousand.
There's gonna be small couple piles. Okay, so the minimum won't be a problem.
Right.
Okay, do we just accept this and find gravel, will we find gravel?
I suppose, you gotta have it.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept, accept the gravel crushing bid? As presented?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion to accept the gravel crushing bid? There a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion? All in favors? Oh, go ahead, Lee.
With this bid, we have to know that we do have other options.
Okay.
Well, that was the, that was the only bid that was submitted. Was from Sundry. Oh, okay.
I'm a little, I'm not quite sure how we should word this motion.
Okay.
If that's, if that's correct. What's that? So far, I'm fine with it, but I'm not sure if it is.
Because we don't have a pit yet, we just need, this is just the gravel crushing, at least that's my understanding. This excludes the royalty paid to the surface owner, Lee.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm fine, okay, that's fine with, with the discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Lee, this is Daryl. Hey, I, I talked to him this morning, they said that there'd be a, about a thirty percent reject on that. Well, that's why we don't know what the royalty and stuff is gonna be yet. And, uh, once we find that out, that's why the crushing is a little bit higher on that particular pit.
Oh, okay, that, that answered it, because I thought that was kind of extremely high.
That's what I thought.
Or just a pay and we accept it, okay.
Cause he said at least minimum thirty percent, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daryl just gotta find a pit with a lot of work.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim, I appreciate us taking a pause.
I didn't even notice.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I looked at the talk about half hour ago and I was like, oh, shoot.
Quality control, it might be a change.
Um, okay, so flex funding. This, this is hot off the press, I guess, as of, was it yesterday or two days ago?
Two days ago.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be used to John and BNI as well, but we finally tracked down the DOT, um, Ben Sempich's name. He administers the flex funding for them. So he's got good insight into where, uh, flex funding applications kinda went wrong, or, or what we can improve on. And we specifically looked at the BNI rule one, cause if you go look on, not always here, two years ago, so two years ago, we, we requested flex fund, which is a hundred percent funded through the state for about a two and a half to three million dollar job on the BNI. It was a, an overlay and then some significant, um, patching slash regrading of Roman curves there, where it's, where it gets you on that. Um, and we weren't selected for the flex fund on that. So, the, the positive feedback was we had, I think, five or six entities that wrote letters of support. Um, Game and Fish, BNI, Midcoda, um, the city did, cause of all, of course, all that stuff. Um, the project itself was a, a good use of that fund, he told us, as far as, as where it is and um, obviously with the industry on the end of it, and so. The, this is the hot off the press take, I guess, is, um, it fell a little short in their opinion on the, the local match or the local involvement. And last year, uh, BNI committed to a, a dollar amount, up to a certain percent of match. And so, Dave and I and Tom met with the DOT and walked out of that meeting stating, hey, we gotta re-meet with some of the stakeholders up along the roadway, including BNI. So new news to John, like I said, he was involved two years ago in these discussions, but I haven't talked to him since, since two days ago, so. Um, we, we think it'd be a good opportunity to reapply for that flex fund and just kinda take a look at some of the options that are in. Um, and even talk to other entities potentially, so. We also talked briefly about the Hanover Road. Um, the DOT actually brought that one up to me about six months ago, cause in October at our meetings, it constantly gets brought up. Took me by Blake at the time about the Hanover Road, so, um, they were, it was very much on their radar and they said, hey, there might be an opportunity for the flex fund application there too, so. Um, we didn't get into much detail with that one, but they, they brought it out there a couple of months ago, and so, um, so that, the timing of the flex fund, you know, it's, it just crossed over to the senate a week or two ago, I can't remember. They're anticipating it'll get approved, they're anticipating it'll be at least the same amount as last session, or even a little more. And application will open in April, and they hope to select by June, so it's gonna be a pretty quick turnaround. Uh, we think we should reapply at least for the BNI road. Let's see. What else went along with that? Yeah, I don't know.
Well, didn't Tom kinda commit that BNI would double their offer? Something like that.
Yeah, everyone tip your waiters and waitresses over here. Yeah. So up, or up, I say up, but to the south, around the curves, there might be some widening to go with that patching and stuff. The intent on the kind of north straight section was that we would mill down the existing asphalt and then re-plant it, yep, yep. So, so you wonder. There'll probably be some widening through there a little bit. Yeah, and that was honestly, the significant cost was up around the curves. Yep, yep. It's hard to even call it, we called it a patching job, but it's hard to even call it a patching job, because there's significant stretches through there. Like you're gonna essentially rebuild the whole road, so. Yep, yep. They awarded sixty six projects last session for the last funding bill. And I think there was about seventy million of total funds, so it, it came out to average of about one million and, and he did say, you know, it was hard for us to commit that much of a dollar amount to one project, I mean, it would've used about five percent of the full bill to, to fund this one, so.
So I'm kinda wondering, because of that project, you know, Minnesota Power is coming in with their transmission line project, and they may need to use Thirty Sixth Avenue sometimes. Are they a company that we can also approach as a local match? I mean, on, with BNI, or is it just, are we specifically looking at one entity?
No, I, you know, that's the approach we took last time, June, when we just visited with BNI, I think, I think the memory is jolly, but I think there was a desire by BNI to, to work with the county to look at improving that road for a few years, and when this flex fund came, we kinda thought, well, this is a good opportunity to, to have the county sponsor it, but the county wouldn't be paying anything, BNI was gonna cover that portion. So we, we didn't really go outside of BNI to have that discussion. But after meeting with them, well, and meeting with them the other day, Dave and I talked after, but yeah, there, there's probably some other, I actually asked the, the question if we have other entities, throw a little bit of skin in the game, and maybe not as much as BNI, but just to show that they're
There's more than one entity.
Part of it or whatever, and he said he thought that would be favorable to, so.
Well, you guys, but that's not something that BNI could do as hard as the repair part, is it?
No.
Not coming off that border, yeah, okay. I just think that would save a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, in kind of, yeah, that'd be.
There'd be, yeah, I, I don't think that would fall more, we'll, we'll, I'm sorry.
I didn't think so, but that's.
And since it's a, it is still an on-system road.
Right, Daryl.
And so there are minimum requirements and stuff, so it's a little more complicated than. Yeah. Brian Fuge's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he, years ago, he, he kinda looked at it like, it is still on system, because once that road self that it was taken off, but it did still, makes sense to keep it on, you know.
Any, how long, any idea how long this would take?
The project? Well, not getting a word, not being notified of award till June, it wouldn't be built till twenty twenty six.
No, but I mean, time period till they'd start, till they finish it. Could they do it in a month or less?
Can I use the same answer I did last time?
Yeah, go ahead.
You give them a longer stretch of time, the better price you're gonna get, so. Typically on a road like that, we might say there's not really a start date, start date is when they can, can speed for, for the asphalt and stuff. Um, we could do like August thirty first, we, I, I've told her a lot of times, it doesn't really matter, so.
Well, I guess the thing would be like, the city's gonna wanna know what to go off course. The campground up there, Branko, BNI.
Yeah. Yeah, and when, it'll have to be.
Get some neighbors.
It'll have to be designed and bid through the DOT, so it's gonna be a pretty simple design. If it's awarded the flex funding and whoever designs it, um, would probably start looking at phasing for that, for those purposes, you know, moving traffic to one side of the road, or whatever the phasing might be. So, it's not really a road you can shut down.
Yeah.
So. But that'll be coordinated with the county and most entities. What's that?
We couldn't even beat you with that.
No.
Not really.
They'll probably end up being piled up.
Yeah.
In relation there.
Yeah. But you can do it as far as, you can do a half mile at a time, or you can do a mile at a time.
I might bum across the countryside. Where? Oh, building up that road?
No, the one off of twenty five.
Well, that's further, further east than I would have to deal with, but I mean, I guess you could do like the golf course section line and then do Thirty Fifth by Earhart's there, but you're still having to figure out.
Looking for skin in the game, right, well, isn't there someone that people live on?
Don't talk to me, I don't have the money.
Well, another option would be off of our road where the curve is. You know, north of the overpass there, and you, there's a, what is that, B and L, right, over the airport area?
Well, yeah, who owns the air, the airport there? Is it BNI or Midcoda? There's another entity you could talk to, because they own the.
Well, we will be talking.
Yeah, the, it's, it's pretty common to keep traffic on this type of project, that the biggest challenge and I'm sure John can relate to this, is you mill two inches of paving off and then you start driving trucks up and down. Potentially got an issue there.
They're gonna, they're gonna reuse that knowing you made it.
Think, we could, yeah, or we, we could give the property to the county. But a lot of times we'll come up the contractor, just deliver it to a site that's coming along, so, yeah.
I can't say no, I guess I don't, you know, it'd be some of the.
But a lot of times we'll ma, we'll minimize the time for any sections between the milling and the paving.
Right, right.
Because otherwise, the mill, they're usually separate contractors, so a lot of times a miller will come in and do milling and then a month later, the, the paving contract will be, you know, we all have that up with the market at this disease. So, there, there will be controls like that, but it, it's a little bit of a risk, I guess, anytime you're driving on mill old and old pavement, it does.
We'd be able to. Yeah, that's, we could detail with our contractors and force them to come in different actions.
Yeah.
Keep the traffic out.
Yeah, I think the heavy traffic, traffic comes from. It'll be coordinated. But, so yeah, just to typo on it, and sorry for keeping you too long, but if between now and probably the middle of April, so not too much time, if there are other projects that any of you feel could be looked at for the flex fund, there's no limit to what you can submit. When you submit them, they will ask for a, a preference, a priority, so. If, if you end up sending more than one, we'll visit you about that, so. That's all I got, unless anyone's got any.
I got one more thing, but.
Oops, they just hung up.
Cracked, you cracked it.
Hopefully that tube will be, it's, it'll be, it's no fence.
Got all the load on the sides up, you ready?
But then I wanna do it a little different than it's been done in the past. Just printing itself, you know.
Then go for it.
Maybe a little different, we're gonna have a game with them.
You got some suspects, or?
Well, it's like, it's a two returner.
Okay.
So. Okay, it's all right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you wanna, maybe go along with you guys when you meet each other for more money, or do you guys wanna handle it?
We'll visit with you, we'll, we're.
Okay.
Depends on your negotiation skills for some time, I guess.
We'll let you do the talking, I'll just slip something in for extra donation.
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll, uh, we'll probably need those.
Okay, thanks for coming, thanks for going.
I might see a lot of each of the road.
You better take two. Tommy, from here.
The one that's left.
Yeah.
Jayden, your phone's, Jayden, your phone's ringing.
Oh, he's probably calling back. We lost you, Lee, did you hear help on me? Oh, your phone died, okay. Yes, it has, okay. Okay. All right, while we're, we're trucking along here, we're gonna get to the ambulance discussion now, so. I moved them over there, so they weren't in the way, thanks, Jim. It's open, it gets too hot if it's closed. Thank you.
Everybody in here from now will be looking for two more commissioners.
Um, this is the ambulance districting. What are we here to discuss?
So this is an informational meeting for you.
Okay.
Um, the ambulance, well, I'm Garcia Lacman, I'm the president of the current Board of Directors of the nonprofit Alvertonny Ambulance Association, this is McKee McNell, she is the squad leader and board member Bill Peterson.
Okay.
And last year, we were, um, notified that there's a new century code, a new law requiring that ambulances not be nonprofits. So we now have to go under the purview of the county commission. So on the bottom of this front page is the century code that reads that. I apologize for the typo in the first paragraph, that date should be six thirty. Twenty twenty five instead of six twenty. So we'll have to, um, register as a district, and that happens through the county. And so we have hired a consulting firm that will help us through that process. And they will send a letter to Jayden and, uh, after her approval, that will be published. And then we'll have an organizational meeting, the, the notices for the organizational meeting where we. And then we'll have an organizational meeting, the, the notices for the organizational meeting where we, um, organize. Uh, elect officers or, or seat aboard and elect officers. And so, um, that will happen, you can see the timeline on the second page. In April, we'll hold an organizational meeting, and at that meeting. Um, we will inform the nonprofit of their duties, century code dictates how ambulances are run. So, we'll run through some of that and give them an overview of how, how it's run. It's hard to say whether some of the board members from the nonprofit will also seat on the board for the county entity. That, it may happen that way, likely it will. The bylaws will be presented, and those will govern us, and, um. I believe our consultants will probably provide us with those. Or there'll be a combination of what they provide us and what we currently operate under, of course, a nonprofit bylaws would be different than a county entity. Possibly, so, um, we'll look at those, um. The mill levy authority will be considered, um, but not necessarily acted upon. So, um, just like the school has no levy authority where they could ask for more, uh, mills, put it through a public vote. Um, it's not decided at all whether that's something we go after. Or we could just submit our request for the number of mills like we have in the past. Um, so, in May, then, we would have to apply for all new licenses to operate as an ambulance. Because we can't transfer from our old ambulance to the county entity, they have to have different names. And so, we'll be applying for that, uh, we would submit our first budget to you in July this year. So, for the current year, all of the money that you are given to the nonprofit will fund the ambulance for the remainder of this year. We'll submit our budget, and then in January. Then, the now money that you approve in July would go to the new entity. So that we have a full, complete year of what we committed to in our budgets. Okay? Um, so for the balance of twenty twenty five, um. It will operate as usual. Then, um, in January of twenty six, when we transfer over that nonprofit, we'll have to decide what they're doing. If they're dissolving, if they're retaining some, you know, training capacity or. Or what happens with the nonprofit. But, we cannot, as an ambulance, get any state grants. Under our nonprofit status anymore, because we're not complying with the new century code. So, we do get state grants nearly every year to run the ambulance, and so, we'll have to. Transfer over to this new entity. Um, financial information, um, I put this at the bottom of this page, just because when you start thinking about this. You'll probably wanna refer back to it, um, the money flow would be very similar, the board of directors will have a treasurer. Separate bank accounts, all of that, so you won't have to be in all the details of the finances. The district will be audited by the state auditors that come and audit the county books. And, um, we would no longer be eligible for gaming funds, because only nonprofits are eligible. Did you say that's true? Yes. Grant money would be given to the county, not directly to us, it would go through the county, go through and then come to us. And then, um, because the ambulances are so expensive. We keep somewhat of a find at the nonprofit for the next ambulance, and then we build on that. The last ambulance we bought five years ago was in the range of four hundred thousand. And so. About every ten years is already.
Oh, what, a ten year rotation?
Well, twenty, I mean, we, we buy one every ten years, because we're buying the main rig. But we keep it. Yep. And so, um, a government entity can have a sinking fund, which we probably asked for. So that ten percent of the mills that we asked for could be put in there, and then we don't have a major budget issue. The year that we need in ambulance. So, that's kind of the, the summary of what we're looking at.
True.
I believe your levy authority would be similar to how like New Salem Ambulance is currently doing it, or the school, or whatever, so you can come and ask for. You know, ten mills, and it's specifically for your ambulance district, rather than, right now, the way it is, we get ten mills for ambulance. But that gets split out as a percentage between Oliver County, um, Beulah, he's in Glenallin, I think, and then Washburn. New Salem already did this process two or three years ago. So, they get their full eight point nine mills, and that's directly to New Salem Ambulance, but now you could get a full ten mills. Just for your ambulance.
Sure.
Now, one other, the, uh, you know, the mayor and I met with USDA. Two months ago, and being considered a poorer county and not a rich county, you, you would qualify, cause that was one of the things Eric O'Gorman told us. So, that'd be an option too, well, we'll know if it could happen with USDA now, but. That's not the way to get funding for something like this.
It will be a grant.
Yep.
But no.
Yeah, and she's not within the board, but whoever the new person is, then she can decide, that'd be an option.
Sure. So, we're looking at, um, we have a board meeting tonight, and we'll decide on, uh, a name. Or a couple name options that can be adopted at the organizational meeting, we'll choose a date in the next week for this organizational meeting. Probably in late April. And then, um, Jaden will advertise, what's the advertising link?
We typically have done like two weeks in the paper, yep, yep, two weeks ahead of that meeting, so it'd be. The week, I, I mean, like, if it's on a Thursday, we do the Thursday prior, and then two weeks prior to that. So, it's not the same week that your meeting is, it's the two weeks prior to that week, yep.
Okay.
Your existing board, are all someone waiting to stay on it, or?
Um, we have one up for reelection tonight, who isn't going to, um, so we have to decide if we're, if we're gonna put somebody on it. Or if we're gonna run with six. The board, this board has run, um. Very smoothly for all the years that I've been involved, like for twenty five years, was, was really good leadership. Strong parliamentary procedures, strong, uh, rules, overseers, as far as laws and, and bylaws and all of that. And so, um, I don't see that the operation is gonna be that much different. The differences will be the budget that we submit to you, because we've never explained with a budget to anybody. And, um, you know, the accountability at the end of the year, the, the finances, the accountability. And then we'll have two-year terms instead of like three-year for board members. But mostly, the operation is gonna be very similar. We are allowed, under the, the, the state law, to have squad members on our board for the county. We, our nonprofit bylaws don't allow squad members on there. Community members, so we might see a couple squad members, that'll change.
With you having to have a treasurer, accountant, whatever, does that have to be hired now, or can you guys pick amongst your board?
You can pick from our board.
Okay.
It's currently hired at the nonprofit. And so.
So, you continue to do that?
Well, not necessarily.
Up to the board.
Up to the board, yeah. Yeah, and you'll wanna assume what the new board will be, cause when you have an organizational meeting and you have a lot of people outside of your board. You know, anything can happen. So, open-minded and help guide them through the next, uh, phase of responsibility and. Understand it's tax money and. Questions?
I think I got all my answers, no. They're gone. Well, you guys have all been involved, God, Mickey's been involved forever. You know, we gotta trust what you guys are doing too.
But just so you know, I mean, we're gonna be under your supervision now.
Okay, we'll put you under Rob's.
Yeah, he doesn't have it.
He doesn't have it. Well, I think that's it.
You guys are on yourself anyway for the most part.
Yeah, and we'll just do the money accountability.
It's very similar to like soil conservation, because they are technically a county board, they levy mills. But they have their own board and, and operating authority, it's very similar to that, they just have to report to us every year, this is what our budget is. So.
You've been accountable, or you've been out of money a long time ago.
Yeah. It's, it's well learned.
Okay, well, thank you for.
Do we have any questions?
Lee, have you got any questions for these people?
No, I, I think, uh, the way I understand it, uh, the requirements will probably change at budget time. But the amount probably won't. Does that sum it up?
That would sum it up, yes.
Yep, they seem to be agreeing with that.
Can we do a, a kind of a motion there, or what do we need?
No, no, this was more information, and they'll send me the information that I need on my end, and then we'll go from there, yep.
Well, thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, no hard choices for you.
I kinda like that agenda up there.
That was kind of my whole point, I was testing the screen out, so I threw the agenda up there, because I figured. What better to look at, so people know what's going on? Yes.
Jim, you wanna be next?
I'm just here for your portfolio, if you have any questions.
I think Alice wants to talk about the policy manual.
We need to get that policy manual situation dealt with.
I'll go grab her quick.
We need to get the ball rolling. Yes, we do.
You said it was your day off, free.
The longer he goofs off here, Darcy, I'll have supper be pretty good. So, you didn't get this, huh?
No.
It's kind of an interesting thing, it's got all the counties. Somebody for public health, and your. I, I don't know if they maybe did something new that came out.
No, they do those every year, um, with updates, I have Rob's in my office, cause they mailed it to me instead, but. Um, no, it's an every year thing, because there's always changes, so.
I took the time to go through it, there's still seventeen counties for free commissioners, so.
Well, if you wanna give the background, Jim, on this, but I, I read the proposal, it's, to me, it looks good, and I like that, it is electronic.
Yep.
So, you guys can have it right on your phones.
Uh, basically, the situation we have is currently, and I just thought myself, well, I was wrong for two, uh, sheriff's op. Office does not have a policy, and what policy's gonna do is, it's just gonna govern everything that the officers do in the course of business of the day. I mean, it covers everything from abuse force to how you drive your squad car. My concern was, and I took it today, is without that, it opens up the individual officer for liability, plus it also opens up the county for a huge liability. So, I went through Lexi Poll, they're fairly well-known, I know a few other agencies and administrators that have set up with them. Basically, they will put together a policy for the department, uh, based on best common practices. It's gonna be based on, you know, federal law, state law, um, and it's, it's a continually evolving thing. A lot of the policies I've seen in the past, they adopted or they plagiarize it from a bigger department. Trying to make it tailored themselves, and then nobody looks at it for another twenty years, and they've found how many legislatures in between where the law has changed. Where these guys will actually go in every year and update the policy and send it to us for our approval. So, they'll generate one that, it won't be tailored to us, but it'll be close. So, I am, I'm assuming Patrick's assistants and.
Yeah, I mean.
HR's assistants, whatever.
Please, uh.
Review each section, if there's anything we need to change, we can change that, we send it back to them, and then for a final review. So. Basically, I'm making a lot of work for myself, but. And, uh, ultimately, in the end, the other thing I like about it is. Most agencies, if they don't have something like this, they get handed a policy, and nobody reads it, they just sign off on it. Here, each section has a short quiz, you can't sign off on it until you've asked you a couple of questions. You can't answer those questions unless you've read that section policy. So, that falls back to your liability on the county again. They can verify that, that information, you know, whether or not they retained it is one thing, but they've at least read it once, signed off on it.
Sure, is there, if we implement a policy, is there gonna be any accountability on? At all?
Accountability on what?
Accountability on following the policy manual as it's written, making sure that, you know, who's, how are we gonna determine whether that's being followed?
Uh, I would hope once they read it, they would follow it, based upon that, but that's probably more of a Dave question than me. Uh, you know, he's the sheriff, I'm not, I'm just trying to get this followed.
Would it be a performance, or be, you know, if there's any issues, they would?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Right. I mean, if there's a blatant violation of policy, then, yeah, it's gonna, I would assume be addressed. Yeah, like I said, that's, that's really my wheelhouse, right, and also. Uh, other than that, I know, uh, Alice, I gave her a copy. Rob, you got a copy, I know.
I took a look at it as well.
Oh, you do?
I gave him mine.
Oh, perfect, uh, you know, ultimately, there's a proposal in there, how much it's gonna cost, that's a yearly fee. But with that, you're updating it every year or two, so I mean, once the legislature's out, if there's any changes that would be contrary to the current policy we had. They would send that chief. So, it doesn't become a stagnant document.
So, how much is it per year?
Three thou, three thousand forty-two.
Three thousand forty-two, okay.
And what I read in there is when they do update a policy, they'll actually have the old policy right beside the new one, so you can see what the changes are.
You can compare and see what. You know, it's, it's three thousand bucks a year, but it's a lot cheaper in a lawsuit.
That's really not that bad, actually.
See some of the other lawyer.
Yeah, so, and it's a board of lawyers that go through and actually create the policy.
Damn lawyers.
So, that's what I got, I mean, I, I think it's something we need to do, and.
I strongly recommend that you vote to pass this.
Me too. And this would take effect immediately then?
Well, I would have to contact them, they would have to create the policy, and then we would go through the process of review and change and whatever. Hopefully, by fall, we would have.
So, do they include? You, so, or is, it's gonna match pretty well close what we need to cover ourselves, or?
Yes, yes, I mean, of course, yeah, it.
I wonder if it'll also reduce our insurance at all.
That's possible, we could check that out. It's definitely work we're getting into.
Will you have any thoughts? I guess I'd like to hear his thoughts, you know, Lee, what are your thoughts on this?
I, I'm trying to figure it out, uh, I'm, I'm confused while you're talking about it. Is this a liability insurance that we're going to have in addition to our. Our regular insurance that the insurance department has, or who's, who's gonna gain, uh, what's it gonna cost, and. I, I guess I have, this is kind of the first I've heard about this, and I'm only gathering parts of it. So, I, I guess I have no more further confidence than that, but I would like to know more about it before I would. I would say yes or no on this.
So, basically, Lee, it's a law enforcement policy manual. So basically, Lee, it's a law enforcement policy manual. That they are required to follow and it helps them do their jobs better. And reduces the liability risk to law enforcement and the county. In the event that they do something that somebody tries to sue us for. It's something that we should have had in place a long time ago, but we just didn't. And it costs about three thousand dollars a year and it gets updated yearly as needed. And it just keeps the county, well, the sheriff's department in compliance with the rules that they are required to follow.
Three thousand.
Per year. Three th- three thousand, three thousand dollars per year for the policy itself. It's not per person. It's just for the policy.
It's not a.
The man, well, the manual.
Yes, correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
It is.
It covers all the sheriff's department employees because it's specifically tailored to law enforcement.
Okay, okay, now now I'm getting a little understanding because I you had me lost for a while.
It's something we should have had a long time ago, so.
We absolutely need this.
So we're looking at only cost of three thousand for the entire department?
Correct.
Yep.
Per year.
Per year.
For three years?
No, per year. It's like an annual subscription, basically.
Yeah, I have to apologize because that my phone is not picking up everything and and uh. Yeah, everybody apparently thinks it's something that we should go along with, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Is that right, Dave, Rob?
Yes, correct.
Alice?
Absolutely, we need this.
We need a motion to approve it, that right?
Yes.
I will make that motion.
All second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
And while I have Jimmy around, I'd like to just let you know that. I will be working closely with the sheriff's department to look at what it would cost Oliver County to. Um, have them go on the North Dakota PERS public safety retirement plan. It's a better plan for law enforcement because of what they go through and it allows them to retire at an earlier age and. It's just something I think Oliver County should look into to thank their law enforcement employees. It's like a difference of two percent more.
Yeah.
Basically.
Yeah, but unless you retire earlier, I guess.
What is that? What is the rule for law enforcement? Under PERS, do you know?
It's eighteen point oh eight percent.
Right, is it like a rule?
No, 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 no.
I forget now.
Yeah, it's it's a lot lower.
I got it somewhere.
Yeah, I just got it too.
I actually looked at the numbers.
It is lower than the eighty-five.
Yeah.
Well, it should be.
Yes.
My other question that came up, it's nothing I've talked to Dave about or anything, but we're setting tanks as far as people out there. And is there gonna be like a car control type thing?
Won't be for law enforcement. Diesel fuel tank.
Oh, it's just a diesel tank. Okay, that was my question because that way we would.
We have.
We would avoid some types of taxes and whatever, and I mean, it would, if you could find involved, we would save. As far as.
Someday we'll have to, when we do budgets for next year, we'll get your gallonage and the road department's gallonage and bring it in.
Okay, nope, I just, I wasn't sure what kind of tanks I came in and didn't have all the information on that.
Just one big thing.
Perfect. All right, well, if you've got nothing else, that's all I needed.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. I'll be in contact with that retirement plan and stuff.
Sounds good. Thanks.
See you, Jim.
See you, Casey. Yep, see ya.
Casey, you're back on deck.
Okay. We should wait till after supper. Trying to come back for my trip.
Where are you going?
I said eighty down there.
So I guess thinking of some things while I was asleep, um, I think Greg had comments about industry and I probably didn't answer your question correctly. But uh, yes, this would not impact the coal mining. This would impact the power plants. Um, I think Jayden commented about the distribution part of that. How it would just change it from one entity to another. Um, actually, the state portion is exempt, so they're not collecting it.
Right.
Only part they're collecting is the fifteen percent.
Right, no, that's what I was saying. It's just that this is basically just. The state dollars that they're giving to us instead of the power plants paying the taxes. They get like a tax break, a tax exemption. State is paying that portion to the counties. And this would shift the amount from fifteen percent to thirty percent. Like, I didn't mean anything by it's moving whatever. It's just state dollars. Changing the amount that they're giving to us. It's not the coal plants or the anything having to pay any sort of money. It's the, it's literally just the state taking money out of whatever fund and they're gonna, well, it's not really any fund, but out of their coal conversion fund. But the plants, the plants don't pay any money. It's just state dollars. They don't collect anything. Cause the power plants are exempt from having to pay any sort of tax right now. So it's state money.
No, they're they're paying a two percent, but then only fifteen percent of that two percent. So they are paying a tax.
Nope.
And that's, well, according to this, it says total tax dollars collected, total collection.
Yeah, that's tax dollars in general. That's not taxes on like a power plant.
So they're not paying a property tax. They're paying a conversion tax. So this is in lieu of property.
Right, which is still state dollars. Yeah, no, this is similar to. Like, like the homesteader veterans credits that we get. So instead of that homeowner paying their property tax, X amount of dollars. The state is just taking money from their fund and giving it to us in lieu of that person's property tax. The coal plants. That's the same thing. So instead of the coal plant paying a property tax or any type of tax, they're getting this break on it. And the state is basically just paying it for them. Right? Cause that's how it's always been explained to me, so.
I would suggest you guys maybe talk to Jonathan Fortner to explain this bill to you, but. Cause I I don't wanna misspeak, but I I would, everything Jayden's sounding is the way I interpret this, but I would highly suggest if you really have questions.
I mean, that's that's just how it's always been explained to us through NDACO. When we work with like our, when I work with the levies and the how much we're supposed to be getting, this is how they explain it to us. It's just state dollars versus somebody's property tax, whether it's a homeowner, an industry or whatever. They're they're exempt basically from having to pay anything.
Okay, so I probably understood that home, but I I guess we could check into that, clarify that more. But I was under the impression that part of it was being exempt and part of it was being collected still.
If the, if that bill doesn't pass, they would start paying tax.
Yep.
So currently, what's happening is the power plant's not paying tax and the state then is making that money up to the county that they would have received.
And this is just an extension.
That tax, so for tax breaks to the power plants for an extended period, for another ten years. And the state then is gonna continue to pay the counties what they would receive. So the power plant still tells you like, so this is how much we would pay you. But instead of paying you, then paying all that money to the state, the state keeps some portion, gives the other portion to the counties. Instead of taking that, the state then saying, here, here's what you would have received if if we would have collected this tax from the. From the, from the power plant, but we're giving them tax break and we're we're eating this at the state level.
Similar to like some of the wind farms that we have too. They get a tax exemption. And so rather than them actually paying those taxes, what the state does is. Tell me how much you're supposed to pay in taxes. This is how much the state is taking from their, well, I'm assuming the general fund and giving it to the counties instead. That's how they are enticing these industries to come into North Dakota by saying, hey, you don't have to pay property taxes for X amount of years. We pay it for you, kind of a thing. I mean, that's what they're doing now, but the state may say they can be taxed as them for, and it's not gonna pay you any money too, I guess, but. I hope they don't do that, cause that'd be, that'd be really, that would be really mean if they did that. No, yes, I, yeah. But.
Jimmy, will you help us think anything, other questions, your concerns?
You know, this person we need to be contacting?
John, Jonathan Fortner.
Here and Greg Simon's contacts at the time.
Yeah, yeah, if you want more information, that, that's who I go to for my information, so.
And to have his card.
And Anna, as the bill sponsor, would also be very well versed in that as well, I believe, but.
No, I don't have his card with me, but I have.
I think I have his contact info too, so.
Yes, cause he came around last week and handled them all.
Did you have a chance to talk to Keith about it at all?
I did, yep. He recommended until the bill twice that we go through Anna because she's the primary sponsor.
And when I talked to Keith, he was like, well, are you gonna gain a lot out of it? That was his thought. You know, he didn't. And that's why I'm still not sure what what the right thing is to do. I mean, the money'd be great. But we split it up, school districts get part of much. And we're not guaranteed enough. That's the bad part.
Right. Well, that's, I think, the bigger issue right now is that the amendment itself hasn't even been presented or in- introduced.
But she's not gonna introduce it unless.
Unless we drop the moratoriums, but then that that's another, that's an ultimatum, basically. Do this or whatever. I mean, at this point. Obviously, it's up to you guys.
It's a gamble.
Been kinda talking with uh Steve Leaf, the chairman from McLean and stuff, you know. If we look at this holistically, then, you know, the real number that we can go off of is off of. The red book, which says four million dollars. So how it's divided up and where it all goes is one thing. But it should be doubling that four million dollars. And with that amendment, as those go in hearings, is somebody could. Change that or amend the amendment and it could end up being seventy-five, twenty-five or, you know, some combination in between. That it might not be a full seventy-three.
Right.
I mean, we can always hold a special meeting. If you guys wanna make phone calls and discuss with these these contacts, Jonathan Fortner, Anna, just to ask a few more questions. I mean, there's always that option. It's not like we haven't had any special meetings before. It is an option.
It's definitely something to think about.
You'd make a more informed decision if you did that.
Yep, does Lee have any secondary thoughts?
Lee, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, I I guess I I let you know earlier on the same subject that I I told you and. I think uh we, I don't think we have anything to gain, but we have a lot to lose if we, if we go ahead with it.
If we left the moratorium.
Yep, I think it's, Anna's made it pretty obvious that we better lift the moratorium, sorry. We we could be in jeopardy really with uh with powerful legislatures and senators.
Well, and I don't know, I don't necessarily know that we'd be.
That's my, that's my feeling on it.
In jeopardy. It's just that we wouldn't, she wouldn't introduce the amendment to increase that amount. I don't think we'd be losing anything. Necessarily, but you know, he did say there were, it was a time where they thought about just doing away with it altogether, so. There's always that chance too, so.
And that moratorium, that's just, the the other one, that conversion, that's their public separate issues.
Yeah.
That's what Lad Erickson commented too. So I believe he was gonna contact Anna and go, why are we putting these issues together? They're two separate issues.
They are. Especially when you consider what some of these moratoriums are for. They're actually. Taking a little bit, well, in my opinion, taking away from coal. Lake solar is another type of energy.
We're protecting coal.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's just my opinion, but I'm just over here hanging out.
Um, so I do, um. From my analysis as to whether any ordinances, again, and I think I I I'd said this earlier. We pass any ordinance that runs a file of the PSC, um, and the other, the other state agency that runs other energy. I can't think of the name of it, but.
NDIC.
NDIC, thank you. Um, I mean, look, let's, from my perspective. The writings on the wall as to what the legislature wants and 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 from their perspective, they're going to back PSC, NDIC. Because that's what the law says. And if we pass any ordinances that in any way contradict what the PIC. PSC or the ND NDIC does, we're we're not gonna prevail. And so you have to ask yourself what, you know, what, what are we trying to accomplish with a moratorium that more, oh my god.
Moratorium ordinance.
Moratorium that we can't accomplish through continuing to work on an ordinance. That ultimately is gonna come across my desk and then I'll look at it and I'll let you know what I think about it. Um, and so, you know, you you have two bills that came in. The Senate bill got defeated pretty handily. I think it was by by a margin of ten votes. It was twenty-seven seventeen or something like that.
The Senate one? No, I think, yeah. I'd have to look, but either way.
The House bill is but is recommended to pass.
It was early on at the beginning of their.
Well, that was just as.
And nobody really looked into it, yeah.
Be as far as February first.
Yeah.
You know, so that's.
It was something that kinda slipped under the radar from my understanding because it wasn't as as uh uh open as the twenty-two point. Saying like, if you pass these ordinances, you're gonna lose this funding.
Sure. You know, I get, what I'm, what I'm really getting at here is that if if the intent, because moratoriums simply cannot be permanent. And so if the intent is to craft an ordinance that will not run a file of the PSC or NDIC. We can do that without a moratorium. We currently don't have anyone that's requested any permits, so. What, you know, what you guys have to decide is what what is, is it worth the risk to? To hold on to the moratorium when in reality, we're gonna have to deal with this situation sooner rather than later anyways. And so. My my perspective is, is that whatever ordinance we we come up with that we present to the commissioners on these things. Has to be able to pass muster or we've wasted a lot of time and the legislature is now. I think, I think the at, their attitude is, look, follow the law. We'll change the law if we want to. So it's a, it's a somewhat of a pick your battle thing. I am in no way saying that a local community should not have significant. Power to regulate themselves and to regulate their land. I believe very, very strongly in it. Um, but we also have to look at reality and we have to consider what options we do have. If we are going to create these local ordinances. So uh, from my perspective, I think, can I give my opinion?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think that it is. A pointless exercise to continue to have the moratorium because we can accomplish what we need to accomplish. Without making enemies of a group of body of legislators that are clearly pointing in a direction that. That is not go ahead and create an ordinance that challenges the law. They don't want that. You know. Just my two cents worth, guys.
I don't know that anybody wants, I mean, from our planning and loading board, wants to do a mor- or moratorium ordinance that goes against state law. Because we we tried that.
Well, that's what happened.
No, I know, and they they have talked about it and said we'd like to.
Let me, let me just be clear.
Yep.
Outside interests got involved. In my opinion, based on what I know, outside interests got involved in that. And created a huge mess that was full. Both sides had.
No, I I know what you're saying.
Look, here's the deal. I don't. I don't believe this is a fight we win if we create, if we hold on to this moratorium and come up with a, any ordinance that runs a file. We're not gonna win it. So what are we, what are we hoping to accomplish with a moratorium? And I'm, I'm open to anyone else's point of view here, because this is just me speaking from, if I have to go to court and argue something. What, you know, what am I going to, to look at?
And I, I might add to that too, that the industrial commission, they have the final say on, on any laws that we try to come up with, that override somebody, or some branch of government, they have the final say. It's the industrial person, governor, attorney general, and the ag commissioner.
On CO2 especially, but I think PSC has final authority on like transmission and um, wind, right?
Energy, anything.
Anything, energy, yeah, yeah, so like solar and probably data centers, I would imagine. And then coal, coal is subject to both, right? Or is it just PSC?
We don't have NDIC.
Okay, I didn't think so. I thought it was just mostly CO2, like wells, like oil, gas and oil and CO2. They don't know because they're so new. They're still trying to figure that out.
Somebody should be taking care of that.
Well, it's so relatively new that they're just not sure. Who's going to have the ultimate authority, cuz I think they're still trying to figure out all the logistics with that as well. But, I mean, regardless of all of that, I think the intent of the moratorium, at least from what PNZ has talked about, was just to allow us time, so we can make sure we're not running a file of the state, as you're saying. Because there are still things that, as a local body, we can, on certain things, have a say in.
Roads.
Roads for sure, but, um, wind.
No, no, roads, that's it. That's what we get a say on, roads.
We have ordinances for wind, though, so.
Well, that's different, though.
That's what I'm saying, some of these are different, because it doesn't fall in, under NDIC. Just like solar falls under PSC. There are some things, obviously, we don't wanna run into what we ran into with CO2. But, that's what the intent was when they passed these, so.
My take after learning more is I'm a hundred percent behind going by what planning and zoning says, but planning and zoning have, doesn't have all the details we just learned today, which they might change their thinking.
They might, yeah.
As far as a moratorium, as far as, if I get what Patrick said, we can always add that later. Or get an ordinance.
What is, you know, again, we don't have anyone requesting a permit now, so the direction to planning and zoning could be get us some ordinances within the next few months. We've accomplished the same thing that we would have with the moratorium and we're not we're not pissing off the legislature. You know, I mean, it's just, it's not a favorable political environment at this time, and it, and from a, from a legal standpoint, it's a losing thing at this time.
Well, I guess if Lee is, uh, if he'd make the motion, I'm, I'll, I'll support it, just because I've been hesitant, but.
Well, I, I, we threw it earlier. I will, I will make the motion that we, uh, do away with the mori- with the two moratoriums that they're, they're considering at this time.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You, uh, yeah, we do need to, we need to roll call.
Roll call, vote Lee.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, guys. Hopefully I can carry the torch across the finish line.
Three beers now.
Yeah, yeah, it was already over. I'd like to stay and listen in on your, um, five man discussion, cuz I think I'm gonna carry. Next week.
Um, cell phones?
Um, so I'm just bringing this up because in the last two months especially, but since I have been auditor. My personal cellphone has been used more for the county work, for county work during work, after hours, on the weekends, I mean, just constantly. Um, and because it's being used for county work, it is subject to open records. And I am requesting a cellphone through the county for myself as auditor, so that I can keep my personal cellphone personal and do county business specifically on that phone. Especially when I am out of the office at meetings or whatever. Um, so I can check my email, respond to anything that's happening back here, or whatever is needed. I would very much appreciate it.
Right, up to three with Jayden.
Um, I don't have a, a direct set cost, because we have gone through Verizon before, but because AT&T came and gave their presentation last month. I didn't know if it would be more cost effective to go with them, but when Kyle had his phone, it was about thirty bucks a month for his phone. So it's really not too bad. I'm not asking for anything fancy. I just need a phone that works and that I can do just county business from.
And I think you deserve it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Oh, you're not saying I deserve all the extra? Yeah. I mean, it would be very much appreciated and it would allow me to at least shut off every once in a while, whereas right now I have my phone and it rings and it's like, I don't know if this is personal or if this is work. And sometimes it turns from personal to work, and I just want them to be like, call my work phone if you need something related to work. That'd be great.
I'll make that motion to Jayden get her own phone for through the county, for the auditor's office.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Golf course lease updates. Patrick, do you wanna take that one?
I do, yeah. So Rob, uh, Rob had contacted me, I think it was last, earlier this month, and asked me to take a look at where the golf course lease stands. So my understanding is, is that this lease originally came out of the Eves, right?
Yes.
Eighties, we, um, and was renewed in nineteen ninety for a thirty year period. Now, at the time that the lease was renewed in nineteen ninety. Um, there were three parties to that lease. There was Mincota, there was, um, the city of Center Park District, and there was the Oliver County Park District. That lease agreement expired. So last year, January of last year, the city of Center entered into another lease agreement with Mincota. And the Oliver County Park District was excluded from that. So that, that begs two questions to me. The, the first question is, did we have some sort of interest in the, uh, in the golf course? And by that, I mean, do we have an ownership interest in it? If we do, my question would then become, why were we excluded from the new lease? Um, that, that's problematic to me, and I think that we should probably address this with the city. Because if we have an ownership interest in it, like a legitimate ownership interest, they're, they're not able to exclude us. So, you know, I, I'm not sure how big of a deal this is, but, you know. We're, we're paying for this thing, right? County's paying for the golf course?
No.
No? Okay.
Believe we've ever paid anything.
No.
Okay, well, that's good. Well, then what, what ownership interests does the county have?
I don't know that there's any.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, from what I understand, Mincota owned, owns or owned the land where the golf course is at. They didn't use it for anything. They approached the county and the city, I believe, you know, whenever this was, to have this golf course.
It's privately owned land by Mincota?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I guess they could, if that was their intention, was to exclude the county, then I guess they could do that.
I believe there was a set of minutes from the mid nineties that the county pulled out of the lease with the city in Mincota. They, they no longer wanted anything to do with it. Well, I think I sent those ones to you, at least I thought I did, but I can double check.
I've got several sets of minutes from different times.
Well, I mean, if that's the case, then, then we, we have no basis to, to object. We probably have no basis to object. Um, if we, if we don't have any ownership interest in the land, because the private owner of the land has the right to deal with it, but they would like, should be no different than renting out the basement of your house to somebody.
They've got, they've gotta give X number of days written notice. After that, those days, we have X number of days to remove property. Anything not removed is defaulted to the surface owner, according to the lease that I read. So really, long reason.
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess the other, the other thing to look into is that if we're gonna be excluded from the lease. Um, why are we providing anything that's counting property?
We're not.
We're not.
I don't think we are.
Oh, that's my, that, my question is, if I go to their meetings and start making recommendations, then we got skin in this thing again.
Yeah.
Or motions, or morsion, yeah, or motions that are financially related.
If we can wipe our hands with it, then I say do it.
Well, that's, that was my suggestion, but I wanted to go through you first.
Well, now that I understand that we have really nothing, other than the fact that the golf course lies within the bounds of Oliver County. If we have nothing at the county, then why would we, why would we concern ourselves with it? It's been a night, it's been a headache.
Lee, have we ever put money into that?
I, I'm not aware that we have ever put any money into, into the clubhouse or the, or the course itself. I don't think we have.
That's my understanding. So that it's an entirely a city-run deal?
The payroll comes out, the city makes payroll. The employees, employees out there are actually on city payroll.
I don't see any reason for you to be involved.
Well, that's, that's my question.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I just don't see it. I mean, we're not a signatory to this lease agreement. If you take a look. So I'm looking at it right now, and the lease, this lease specifically superseded any prior leases, meaning any prior leases are null and void. And the, uh, the recitals of this contract specifically name only two parties, the Park District of the city of Center and Mincota. So, we're just not a part of it.
Okay.
So this is what I found in the nineteen ninety-nine special commission meeting minutes, cuz they're talking about previous sublease between the joint park districts and the Squarewood Golf Club was terminated in ninety-nine, and I mean, like, there's this whole thing. Because there was, I believe I sent those ones to you, or there was something terminated.
I know there was.
And then I think that's kind of when the county just kinda.
Wiped their hands?
Pretty much.
I mean, it looks like they, they simply.
They just gave it to the city, basic, or the lease to the city with Mincota.
It's best interest of the county to, to stay out of it.
I concur.
Yeah, I agree completely. I'm, I love golf, but not enough to put up with.
I will, yeah.
Lee, what that says is beads, Rob's giving up the golf course, uh, portfolio, he can take on the ambulance one.
Well, we have to hold him out?
I will relay that message to the city and then they can do what they need to do from there.
Okay. So I don't believe we need any motions on anything.
No, I, I wouldn't know what.
Yeah.
Okay, planning and zoning ordinance, compensation plan?
Um, yeah, the comprehensive plan here. So we had gotten that quote from SRF Consulting, and I got another quote um, yesterday from Houston Engineering. And I just wanna make sure I'm finding the right one. And then I'll put it up on the. Maybe not, I shut that off, my bad. Okay, so Houston Engineering gave me a quote. And it was either ten thousand less than SRF or ten thousand more, depending on how much work that they actually put into it. So, in my personal opinion, SRF is a better option. Um, they work very closely with the planning, or NDACO's Planning Association. Um, but Houston Engineering's quote was between seventy-one thousand to ninety-two thousand, and that is both updating the existing comprehensive plan and reformatting the zoning ordinance, and also assisting with any planning or implementation that we need to do for both the comprehensive plan and the ordinance. It needs to be updated, both of them do. Whether we do them both at the same time, because they're supposed to go hand in hand, or we do one this year and one next year, obviously, that's kind of up to you, but I would say Patrick would agree that having outdated comprehensive plan is probably not a good idea for the county.
No, you don't want that. It's a lot of money. I was shocked by how much it's gonna cost, but it's a, it's a necessity. We need to have that underlying basis upon which we are.
Building our organizations and, and enforcing them.
Um, you have yours updated, you said?
We just did RFP done, so they're working on it.
So they're doing the same thing we're doing, is getting quotes.
Next week, they were having a public meeting for public input.
Yeah, we already assigned, we already awardedized.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're already working on it. Sold through the same company?
Who are you guys using?
We did a conglomeration of law firm, and he's in the engineering company of this much apex engineer.
I mean, obviously, it's, it is a lot of money. There is that Oliver County Community Foundation, okay? So they came in a couple of years ago and they award grants every quarter or every spring and every fall. The county actually qualifies to submit for money for that. My question to you would be, would you like me to apply for some of that money? This would benefit the county as a whole, so it's not just benefiting the courthouse or the commissioners, it's benefiting the people of the county. Where it's a good use of grant money to cover part of that cost, um, whether or not we would get all of it, I doubt it, because they like to split it between a couple of entities each. Um, award period.
Well, I think she told me there's only thirty thousand.
There's thirty-one thousand for spring and thirty-one thousand for fall, but they also created an endowment fund, so if there's other donations that would come into the community, you know, I can go towards that, but.
Is the overall cost of it?
Um.
It was a hundred and fifty thousand they gave over three years.
No, the cost of the plan.
Cost of the plan to do the.
So for the comprehensive plan with SRF Consulting, it's about sixty thousand.
Can we get them to split that up into two separate payments?
I'm sure we could ask them if we could, I don't see why not. Yeah, I don't see why. I mean, I doubt that this community foundation would give us the full thirty-one thousand, um, but.
Probably five thousand after all the meetings we've been to.
Probably, um, and then the planning and zoning ordinance update total not to exceed twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety cents. That's for SRF Consulting. Houston Engineering's total, this is comp plan and planning and zoning ordinance. Total would be between seventy-one thousand to ninety-two thousand, so, I mean.
I would sure think it makes sense to apply for the grant.
I would agree with that.
Well, and I can absolutely do that. I, you know, looked into it and we do qualify, and I feel that this would be a better use of that type of grant money, even if it's just a small chunk, versus like something else that would benefit just the courthouse building or the shop or whatever. Um, we do have LATCF funds still, and that is federal funds that we had received. It can be used for anything except lobbying. That could be used towards this. I know we're looking for police vehicles also, so we just. Not this year?
Nope.
Okay, cool. So there is that money there also, even if we only used a portion of it to cover this cost. But, right now, we do need something done, because we're relying on the comp plan from the nineteen seventies to enforce our planning and zoning ordinance that has formatting issues and needs to be updated as well, so. If you want, I mean, I'm sure they would like an answer at some point, but between the two. They, I, they would both be good. They were both recommended by planning and zoning director. They, I, they would both be good. They were both recommended by planning and zoning directors across the state. There were, like, KLJ was another one, but. I think those would be pretty, KLJ is pretty expensive, so. But I've worked with Scott at SRF Consulting before, so he's pretty good to work with, so that's just my.
If you haven't read their, the original comprehensive plan, uh, it's, uh. Makes you wake up a little bit to see how outdated this is. We definitely need.
It definitely needs some updates. I mean, there's still some valid points in that comprehensive plan, but it definitely does need updates. Based on today's world and industries that have.
What's the cost in worship, Tony? Any idea? You want to get a cost this Casey?
Our original one is for fifty thousand, but, yeah.
Did that, did that definitely include all our comprehensive now? Did it? It was just a policy trade?
I believe so.
Okay.
So what do you think, Lee? Should we approve it, get it done to protect ourselves down the road?
I th- I think we, we should approve it, um, we, at the same time, we should apply for the grant money. And uh, hope, hopefully we'll get some grant money, but if we don't, we'll, we'll figure out a way to fund it.
Yeah, and the state does have like planning and zoning grants too. I just. When those open and whatever, I'm just keeping an eye on it, so. I haven't seen anything yet. I've looked, but they have nothing right now, so at least starting with this one and then we kind of figure it out from there would be great. Cause it might take a little bit for them to come up with a time, a schedule when they can come up and start working with us and. They'll help set up meetings for public input, because we will need to do that as well, so.
I will give a call to Minnesota Power. Even I talked the other day, I can't think of his name, but. He said if the county needs anything, or the community, he said. They'd be willing to make a donation.
Sure.
I want to be an eye over there, Greg.
I think I'm already writing a big check for a road.
I mean, if we want, if you wanna take a little bit of time to mull over those numbers again, I'm.
What were those numbers again?
Um, so for the Houston Engineering, the estimated cost for both comp plan and planning and zoning was seventy one thousand to ninety two thousand. Depending on. How much they, how much or how little they do, or what we need them to do. SRF Consulting for the comprehensive plan was not to exceed fifty nine thousand seven hundred and forty three dollars and twenty cents. Which, I mean, I guess it could be a little bit less than that, but.
That's not the whole program.
That's not the whole program, that's just the comprehensive plan. For the planning and zoning update, it was twenty thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars and ninety cents. Like I said, with with theirs and Houston Engineering's, it was either gonna be, they were gonna cost us ten thousand less or ten thousand more roughly.
Eighty thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess if Lee thinks we should go for it, I'd, I'd game, I'm going off his knowledge of what.
And if you want to, we can start with one. I mean, we can start with just the comprehensive plan. And then get that done and then, and then go back to either one of them. And then do the planning and zoning ordinance update, because the ordinance itself, the formatting is the worst part right now. I mean, because it's been thrown together over the years with different. Different regulations and everything. The comprehensive plan is so outdated now, that that is where we really. Probably should be focusing most of our attention. However, if we want these ordinances. Potentially worked on for solar and data centers, it may not be an awful idea to have a consulting firm onboard to help us.
Right. That's, what, what was we gonna say?
I was gonna say that what, what Jayden suggested there probably is maybe what we should do is just go with the comprehensive plan. And then we, we can always get into the planning and zoning portion.
And I'm perfectly fine.
And that be through which, which one?
I have the breakdown with Houston and SRF too, I mean, like with the comprehensive plan versus the planning and zoning ordinance itself. So the comprehensive plan range is forty eight thousand to sixty two thousand for Houston Engineering. I mean, so there again. Depending on what they do, it'll be a little less or a little bit more.
You have forty eight to sixty two with this guy and fifty nine, just under sixty, pretty much a cement grid on that one.
Yeah.
You have a suggestion, which one?
Um, I mean, I've worked with SRF Consulting in in like planning and zoning workshops. They're very easy to get along with. They're very knowledgeable. I'm not saying Houston Engineering isn't, I'm just, you know.
Lee, have you worked with either one in the past?
No, I haven't.
Okay, I guess this will be a learning curve. I'll make a motion.
What I did in the past, I was on the original committee that.
They just wrote it.
Your plan way back.
They probably didn't have quite as many. Concerns to take into consideration.
I'll make the motion to go with the.
As far as the engineering firms know, they're gonna do this, I have no, no comment on those.
I'll make the motion to go with SRF for just the comprehensive plan to start with.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Fire ban discussion.
That would be me. Yeah, is that gonna go off tomorrow or Friday when it rains? Is it full story? Cause now they pushed it back. And now we're supposed to get lots of winds again this weekend, so that's kind of frightening.
Yikes.
Um, I know, I don't know if most of you saw that fire results, it's out the glenoland.
I've seen the fire.
It's awful dry out there. She's saying that we should put a fire van on. So, this would just restrict. The one that I'm forju- um, suggesting is just. When the North Dakota Range Land Fire Danger Rating is very high, extreme or red flag warning. There would be no open burning, which includes burning of leaves, grass clippings, garbage pits, ignition of farm or crop. Residue land, hayland, slews, construction debris, fallen trees, fireworks, ground and aerial and can fires, bonfires and recreational fires. What's excluded is your gas charcoal with fire pillow girls, patio fireplace, chimneys, gas camp stoves and smokers, pellet grills. As long as they are on a hard, non-organic surface and fifteen feet away from vegetation. And an extinguisher or water is available on site. So it's not a total burn ban, it's just a restricted burn ban.
I'm not opposed.
No, I think it's a smart idea.
I lost some pasture the other day, cause I made a carburetor. That was the night as a benefit at the civic center.
Oh, really? I heard the sirens going while we were checking cows.
Found out the next day, oh yeah, you lost some pasture. That was on Kyle's, right? No, those are hillstorms, old hillstorms.
Oh, no.
Yikes.
So what do we need, motion to enforce that? What do we wanna call it? What kind of ban?
Uh, it is a fire emergency, um, joint restrictions.
Okay, I'll make the motion to go with whatever she says. Is there a second to that? Okay. Oh, uh, is any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carried.
And there is a fifteen hundred dollar by uh, fee for violating this burn ban, so. Pick it up and sign there, and then let Jayden sign, and then she'll get it up to the website and stuff.
Okay, have we had any, we, uh, to be on the park board that open position? So I'm gonna call a couple people. If I call and one says yes, are we okay? You guys okay with, uh?
Do you just want?
Appointing or would we all ask them still? We'll still have to fill out the uh, reform, but I'll make some calls.
Okay.
Do you have somebody, Dave, that will do it?
Well, I'm thinking I'll ask Gary Price. And then Jesse Lackman.
Whoever you choose, Dave.
Any further business coming for the commission? Not meetings adjourned.